Okay, we have a call in the meeting to order. We're running a little late here. Welcome, everybody, to the City Council meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Johnston.
Here.
Mayor Protem Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Blatts.
Here.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
Councilmember Wyrick.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Will you all rise? And Ryan, will you lead us in the pledge?
One, two, three. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes in the order that anyone would like?
I'd like to suggest, Mayor, that I think there might be a lot of public comment on the very last item, number six, and we consider moving that to the front of the agenda.
Item number six, to move that up.
We can. Did you?
Okay, let's see.
Do you want to finish the budget first?
Well, yeah, that'll maybe take a while.
I'm thinking we just, I have, I have a feeling, there's a lot of public interest in that, and we could honor people's management of their time by taking that up right after consent.
Okay. We also have the North Round item that may have a lot of people here.
We do that as well.
Yeah, why don't we move both of those?
Both of those ahead of budget.
Forward.
Okay, six, so we'll move number six and number four in advance of number two. If there's no, are there any other suggested changes? Okay, if not, any objection to approval of the agenda is reordered? Not hearing any? Okay, it's so ordered. We have no presentations this evening, so let's go ahead and take the consent calendar.
Move approval. Second.
Okay.
Mayor, we have one speaker card on item D.
Item D.
On the consent, one D, I'm sorry.
One D or E?
D.
It says D.
One D.
The investment policy?
The investment policy?
What's one D?
Investment policy.
Did you put that in, Rudy?
Michelle, do you?
No, I just had a comment.
Okay, well, just a second, we'll, we'll.
I'll move approval of all the consent items except for D.
Hang on. Okay, so we're pulling that, that item, and we also need an announcement.
And I can make that before the vote, if you'll allow me, perhaps now?
Sure.
So this is a public announcement for item 1H, which is the proposed city manager's employment agreement. As part of some transparency reforms, the state now requires that I make a public announcement orally of the key contract provisions, which is proposed as a city manager's employment agreement with Mr. Vega to provide for his services as city manager in the usual form. The agreement is in the contract. It provides an annual salary of $160,000, benefits standard as provided for other employees. However, the city manager shall pay the full share of, employee's share of his pension costs, as distinct from other employees. The cost of the salary and benefits are accommodated in the present budget. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so with the exception of one D, do we have a motion for approval?
Yeah, we had a motion and a second.
Okay, a motion, any, any discussion on that? If not, okay, I guess we do have a financial issue on this. We take a roll call? Okay, call the roll, please.
Mayor Johnston.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Francina.
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts.
Yes.
Councilmember Haney.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick.
Yes.
Okay, we are now going to take a look at item 1D, and I have one card on it. Michelle.
All right. Hi, I'm Michelle Ellison. I won't be long on this topic. I just want to make a simple recommendation, but it's an important one regarding our investment policy moving forward. I would recommend that the council very carefully consider divesting all of our assets from fossil fuel companies. There's a major divestment movement underway. Over $6 trillion in assets have been moved out of institutions, out of countries, out of supporting, continuing to support fossil fuels, which are harming all of us. So my recommendation, I don't know if it's necessarily to take action this evening, but to, for future consideration, to amend our investment policy to include divestment from fossil fuels.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
For your comments.
Mayor, can I just add to that? Can we find out how much, what we are investing in? And bring it back to, and bring it back to council?
Approximately $3 million of our investments are in certificates of deposits from various different financial institutions. We also have approximately $1 million in the, excuse me, in Cal Trust, which is a local government pool that's set up, that has a broad base of investments in it, that tends to be very socially, following the term, for what it means, socially responsible investment activity, because different people have a different view of what that really means. And then we also have money that is in the local agency investment pool with the state, state treasurer's office. Other than that, we have money in, in our bank account here with the Bank of the Sierra, as well as the Wells Fargo Bank.
So the question would be to dig deeper into those investment funds and find out what they're investing in? That's, that's what I'm asking. How much of it is actually invested into fossil fuel?
Okay, so.
And can we?
The council's in agreement that we direct staff to take a look at the investment and see what indirectly or directly is invested in the oil and gas industry and?
Yeah, and just, the treasurer, Mr. Rains and I have had discussions, and our intent is to liquidate the Cal Trust investment and move it over to other things. I think we would find that the state treasurer's investment pool with, for the local agency investment fund is probably very sanitized with regard to these things because of the, the sensitive nature of them, but we'll have to look into that. But that, that's our plan right now, is probably within the next two to three months, liquidating that Cal Trust fund and putting it into other investments, whether it be certificates of deposit or in the state treasurer's.
Okay, so if there's no objection to that, the city manager will follow up on that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Didn't we have a discussion last year about not investing in anything to do with nuclear?
That was a separate resolution.
That's correct, and the, the investment policy has been amended to have a clause in there that we will not invest any of this. I don't remember exactly where it's at. I can find it, but it's in the policy that's in front of you.
There would be a similar process that.
Very good.
And we do not have any of that.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve that?
It's a move.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any objection? Not hearing any? So ordered. Okay, we are now, what's our next item here?
Item six.
Item six. And item six.
Before we do that, can we find out who's here for item six? Because maybe they're thinking it's going to be at 10 o'clock.
You've got, you've got like 15 speaker cards. I think they're represented.
I think they know.
Oh, you haven't.
I think they know.
Sorry, sorry.
Right.
So you, you, you have the speaker cards in general?
Mr. City Manager, why don't you kick it off, and then we'll take the comment from the public.
Yes, thank you. And so, item six is an item to discuss the possibility of adopting a resolution opposing new oil and gas drilling and hydraulic fracturing within the Ojai Valley. The item was requested to be added with some urgency because of a Bureau, Bureau of Land Management decision related to projects within the valley that has a current public comment period that ends on June 10th. The item was requested by Mayor Protem Francina, and we've included the resolution. Staff hasn't performed an analysis. This was late breaking, I think on Thursday, Wednesday or Thursday of last week. So we wanted to get it on the agenda for discussion. We haven't fully analyzed the resolution at this time.
Okay.
Yeah, we've had, can I just say, call me, we've had.
Your microphone.
Oh, sorry. Okay. As of a few hours ago, we had 67 letters in support of adopting a resolution opposing new oil and gas drilling and hydraulic fracturing within the Ojai Valley. We had no letters in favor of, of any of this.
Right, yeah. Okay, I have a lot of cards, and we have a long meeting ahead of us, so we are going to limit the comment to two minutes apiece, and I'm going to try to hold everybody to that, even if you're waxing eloquent on your point of view. And those of you who feel like you agree with the previous speaker, just say ditto, and we'll move through and have a vote on the subject. Yeah, okay. Late breaking news coming in for the same subject. Okay, so I've got Peggy LaSara, followed by Tina Broman. So Peggy, come on down, and there's a seat up front for those who are on deck. So Tina will come down and be on deck. Peggy, you kick it off. Two minutes, please.
I won't even take, I won't even take that long. First of all, hello to everybody, Mayor Johnston, members of the council, thanks for all that you do. It's insanity to not do everything that we can to prevent fracking in the valley. One of the ways that we, as a city, can wrest control from the county regarding this matter is to, I learned this from Robin Gerber, and she'll speak much more eloquently than I about it, but the city has control over a portion of Creek Road. And if we made a resolution to preclude oil and toxic waste tankers from using that stretch of the road, that might discourage further fracking activities. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Peggy. Nice to see you. Tina, you're up, and Trevor, Trevor, come on down, you're on deck.
I'd like to thank you for attempting to at least look at the situation about fracking in Ojai, because it definitely is against what Ojai is all about. We have a lot of air pollution problems, inversion layers and things like that, but if you've heard me speak before, my heart lies on Creek Road, and we are already having problems of trucks that are not obeying the current ordinance that is written for safety and the welfare of the citizens of Ojai. I've recently sent in pictures of two separate instances where trucks are photographed passing by the no trucks ordinance area that we currently already have. We are working with the county to try to make improvements on Creek Road overall. I will speak again that we need stop signs down there, we need a bigger overall plan, but I'll tell you what we don't need is one more truck down there. We don't need, they're taking up two lanes of the road, they're not physically capable of fitting within the road, which I've already sent photographs to everyone that really needs to see photographs, and we need to do something to actually stop them from being down there, because it's dangerous, and if this goes through, or we have more trucks, we have a really dangerous situation. It's a wildlife corridor, and it is a sensitive habitat. We have deers coming out and an existing problem. So thank you for your attention to this matter, and thank you for continuing to focus on Creek Road.
Thank you, Tina. Trevor, you're up, and Chris Collier, you're on deck.
My name is Trevor Zierhut. I'm here on behalf of Ventura Citizens for Energy Independence in opposition to this proposed resolution. VCEI and its member companies are committed to in-state oil and natural gas production that provides Californians with safe, affordable, and reliable energy supply produced in a manner that safeguards people and the environment. We are committed to environmental stewards of our precious ecosystem and produce oil and gas under the most natural, under the most stringent regulations in the world, overseen by more than two dozen federal, state, and local agencies. We are submitting for your review an infographic about, about emissions entitled "Oil and Natural Gas Producers Are Highly Regulated by California Air Resources Board and Regional Air Districts." This illustrates that they operate under the strictest emissions control regulations in the nation. We are leading the way in a new energy future which incorporates all forms of energy, including oil, natural gas, and renewables such as wind, solar, hydroelectric power. We recognize that renewable energy sources are a vital part of California's energy mix along with traditional energy to meet today's energy demand. I've also submitted information to the city council, and for the record, detailing the carbon capture and renewable energy projects that local producers are investing in. Local producers are looking at different ways to make California oil and natural gas production carbon neutral. California uses every barrel of oil and gas produced in-state, but still has to import more than 70% from foreign sources that do not have the same environmental, worker, and safety standards that we do here. Foreign dependents threaten sustainability, reliability, and affordability. So specifically in Ojai, according to the Casitas Water District's annual report, you should rest assured knowing that Golden State Water Test delivered to its customers to ensure it meets the stringent quality standards. Thank you very much, and please vote against this resolution today.
Thank you, Trevor. Chris, you're up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm Chris Collier. I'm here as a consultant in the oil and gas industry, but I'm also from Ojai. It's possible to be in favor of oil and gas and be from Ojai, just to make sure that's said. I hike in the same hills you do, I get chased around with the same rattlesnakes, a pro trail that you do. I, this is home. And we all share the same future. Look, climate change worries me, too, and I want to talk a little bit about some of the problems in the resolution and ask you tonight to do further analysis. Resolution says clearly the United States is an oil exporter, I'm not contesting that, but California's not. In fact, we don't export anything out of California for oil and gas. All oil and gas production in California is consumed here. Two-thirds of what we need comes from other places. I read something in one of the reports we get as industry consultants, it says, more oil passes through the Straits of Hormuz every day than California produces, headed to California, than California produces. We're importing oil from places with horrific human rights problems. We're importing oil that we could be producing here, and let's be honest, everybody drove here. Most people did, anyway. There's a lot of cars in the parking lot. We're consuming oil and gas every day, and zero oil and gas production is not a part of that renewable future. We have to transition. I'd say that there's an issue about drilling locally. It says in the resolution that it will impact climate change, but what about climate change on the global spectrum? What's it take to ship oil from the Middle East to California so we can consume it and put it in our cars, or the glasses, or medical equipment, or anything else that's made of plastic? So as you consider this tonight, please consider the effect of global climate change, and not just what we could do here, because we need to produce in California while we're still consuming more than we make at home. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. Linda, is this all of us, or all?
Yes, sir. Do I come there, or do I just stay?
No, come on, come on down, yeah, get on camera. And Chris Hilger, you're on deck.
Okay, Mr. Mayor and the city council, according to the U.S. Geological Survey of California, Ojai is one of Ventura County's cities that are closest to the San Andreas Fault. We know that when private companies began fracking in Oklahoma and Missouri, it caused up to 50 small earthquakes every day. In addition, fracking can cause both air and water pollution. I ask you, if we start fracking and have multiple earthquakes each day, how long will it take for all these quakes to stir up the big one, the San Andreas Fault? Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Chris Hilger, you're up, and is this?
Chris Hilger is.
Is it Toby or Dale?
704 Park Road, Mr. Mayor, council and chief. I rise before you to be against the proposition with handling, and of course, I'm not for, I'm not for drilling in the school or doing something in the valley that's damaging, but I think that the oil industry has been here for over 100 years, and the things have changed drastically in how they're regulated. And most of all, I'm concerned about the jobs it provides, and the income and the taxes and the good citizens that have worked in the oil industry for over 100 years here. And they're all good citizens and help, helping the community. And I think that one of the things to be considered, that one of the other fellows said, was that, the LA Times reported, 24% of the smog in California and Fresno is from China. So we'd be better off to regulate our own environment and our own county, even if you don't include the Valley of Ojai, not to get rid of oil production in California. I think that's, that's a big mistake. And I think as far as the taking over of wind and solar, that's going to come, but it hasn't come yet, and it doesn't provide enough of an income to make a difference. And there was a long article in the Ojai, or in the Wall Street this week about how they have not gotten the permission to get power lines to east and west coast from areas that are very prolific in wind and solar, and it hasn't happened yet. And I think the last thing I would say is people have no idea the consequences it would have to everyday living if you did away with what the oil industry provides. There would be no plastic, there would be no roads, there would be no cement, there would be no cars, there would be no airplanes, because these things all take BTUs. And BTUs now, or there isn't enough in the environmental area, provide the things that make the country great. And the last thing is, I would say that probably, I say I don't have a dog in this hunt, but actually I do, because I have a picture in my pocket of my father working in Shell Gas Station Number Six in Berkeley, California, and he put himself through college.
Thank you, Chris. Is it, Toby? Toby, with William Holden on deck.
Hi, guys. I am kind of sick of industry wonks getting up here and saying that they bring jobs and that this is safe as houses, and that, oh, we all drove here. I don't know if you looked out front tonight, but there are like 25 bikes out there. There are those of us who are fighting for a different way. Anything that you do with petroleum, as far as plastic, you can do with hemp, you can do with corn. Solar is cheaper than coal and gas. This is as of last year. We do have the San Andreas Fault, we do have a major drought, we need to protect our groundwater, and I'm sick of the bottom line being put on par with quality of life. It's simply not. Era Energy, one of the job providers in Ventura, is actually one of the number one leading causes of air pollution in this county. Oxnard has one of the highest concentrations of kids with asthma in this state. These are facts, these are quality of life, and I urge you to do what you can to protect us from this administration, the BLM, and what they're trying to do to our last little pocket of goodness. Thank you.
Thank you. William? Please, happy fingers, but no applause or boos, okay?
Thank you, and good evening. I hear a lot about money and jobs, and I'm not hearing about the core issue, water. Cars, this whole life could change. Maybe we don't drive around, maybe we don't have the internet, but if we have water, we can still be a community, we can still live. With no water, for future generations, oh my God, what kind of a legacy would that be? They're not pumping mother's milk into the ground, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you, William. Christopher? Chris Young?
And who's after Chris Young? Who's next? Who's on deck? Who's on deck?
Yeah, and.
Welcome.
Thank you. I must have been asleep back there.
Steve Weissman is on deck.
My name is Chris Young. I was actually back there trying to think of something funny to say, and, you know, so it's very difficult, but I will start with an acknowledgement of my own imperfection. I drove here tonight in a vehicle powered by internal combustion, so just want everyone to know, I'm not a saint, I'm not perfect, I'm not expecting that of you either, but that doesn't change the reality that we can begin to move towards something intelligent, which would be to stop using fossil fuels. You folks know that. I hope you'll help us do that. We need a moratorium on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Dree?
Dee.
Is that right? Is it Dree or Dee?
Dee.
I'm Dee.
Oh.
I just want to say that I'm 100% opposed to fracking in my home, in my valley, for myself and my children, and I drove an electric bike over. Thank you.
Okay. Cynthia Greer? With Justin Peters on deck.
I actually have two things, topics, I put in two cards. My first one is, I just quickly want to say I am very much in favor of continued funding for the Ojai Valley Green Coalition.
This is just on, this is just on this item?
Okay, I'm going to do that item then, too. That's all I wanted to say with that. But this item, I'm, I would like to see the city move forward with some sort of voice towards banning new oil and gas drilling and completely against fracking, because our water is at danger, our air is at danger, our economy here is in danger, because we don't want to see that. It will actually affect our tourism industry, so that's my feeling about it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Justin Peters with Jack Weber on deck.
I've got some. Good evening. My name's Justin Peters. I work with California Resources Corporation. I'm actually the HSE Safety Advisor for our group in Ventura Basin. I also live in Upper Ojai. I have two daughters, very active in the community with 4H. We actually have seeps in our, in our yard, so we see the seeps through 33 daily. So one thing that would be affected by, you know, if we were to move forward with this, is that, you know, the, reducing the seeps won't happen. By drilling and by producing oil and gas, we actually reduce the seeps, and we, we are able to use that oil and gas for a productive reason. So we really need to keep that in, into consideration, and I gave a handout, given some more details on that. Also, you know, the ban on local production just makes our community more, more dependent on super tankers from Saudi Arabia, okay? That don't apply, as a lot of folks that are in the same mindset as myself, don't apply the strict regulations that California does on our industry. And that's one thing that everyone's got to be crystal clear on, is that we operate under the strictest environmental, human rights conditions in the world. So we, we produce oil and gas here for the, for the good of this country, okay? And that's very, very important. And I think, I heard somebody say about fossil fuels that hurt us all, and I just think about my daughters. So I have two daughters, 10 and 13, and I'm very proud to work in this industry, and I have to explain to them what we do. And what we do is we enable this country to be the great country it is. That's the brass tacks of it, is that affordable oil and gas gives us the opportunity to be innovators, that to produce good quality medication and the devices that provide us a good life here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Jack Weber, you're up, and Robin Gerber, you're on deck.
Good evening, council members. My name is Jack Weber, and my view on this has been represented by my neighbors tonight. I'm 100% against any fracking in this valley. I'm 100% against increasing fossil fuel use. Anybody who has spoken tonight on behalf of their children should understand that we're in climate crisis, we're in climate emergency. There's no room and no time for any increase in fossil fuel use and production. So that's all I have to say on this tonight, and.
Thank you, Jack. Robin Gerber with Kimberly Rivers on deck.
Hi, my name is Robin Gerber. I'm the board president of Climate First, replacing oil and gas, which I think most of you know as Sea Frog. And congratulations, Mr. Vega, by the way. Thank you very much for introducing this legislation, this resolution, Councilwoman Francina, and for the city considering it. We're very much in favor of it. Let me say that I see our industry friends are still here. We do talk about transition. We're very happy to talk to you about transition, Chris and Trevor. But transition is not drilling the most, the dirtiest, most dangerous kinds of tar sands oil. Transition is not drilling into our aquifers and dangerous gases going into them, as we've seen happen on the Oxnard Plain. So yes, we understand that this has to be a transition, and it's one we want to talk about, but one that has to be done correctly. I would also ask that, along with this expression of disapproval and extreme extraction, that you take steps, as Peggy was saying first, to reduce the danger of conventional oil drilling, and by that I'm talking about the oil lease just behind our city, above Soul Park and Persimmon Hill. They were given, as you well know, a 20-year extension, a 20-year additional county permit earlier this year, despite your best efforts to stop it. Creek Road residents have been asking for relief from the dangers of the road, and one of the biggest dangers is that one of those tanker trucks is going to have an accident, and you're on notice about this. It needs to be stopped. There is a portion of Creek Road, and you've been investigating what portion that is, that is in the city limits, and you can stop the trucks from going on that road. So please, take this action and take that action, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Kimberly.
Good evening. For the record, my name's Kimberly Rivers. I'm a resident of the city of Ojai, and I'm speaking tonight in support of the efforts of Los Padres Forest Watch to stop the federal government from opening up new areas across our state to new drilling and fracking. And it's important to know that the resolution you're considering is actually in support of an existing moratorium in the state of California.
of an existing moratorium in the state of California. Right? So the federal government, this would be a new step for them if this B L M plan gets approved. You know that the valley is one of the gateways to the Los Padres National Forest, and the city of Ojai is a unique stakeholder in the area. As the only municipality in the Ojai Valley, it's important that you, our elected representatives, take a strong leadership role in this effort and do all that you can to protect our air and watersheds from the dangers of new oil drilling and new fracking. The B L M's plan would allow new drilling and fracking across the state. Over 1 million acres would be opened up. While speaking out to protect our little corner of the world, we can join the Coalition of Voices opposing this statewide. In addition to moving forward on this resolution, please place on the agenda for your next scheduled meeting an action item to send a letter drafted by staff, approved by you, addressed to David Bernhardt, Secretary of the United States Department of the Interior, stating the city of Ojai's opposition to the B L M's plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kimberly. Now, that's all the cards I have, but I do have two cards that have no names on them, but they both say they favor it. Is there somebody out there that...
Maybe a card that says that I don't favor my mom's stuff. Or me.
Okay. Okay, that's what, don't favor?
No, it, you know, it's a little awkward because there, in favor means, tell me if I'm correct, in favor of adopting a resolution opposing new oil and gas drilling and hydraulic fracturing within the Ojai Valley. That's what, in this case, in favor means.
The two cards don't have names, so I have, I can't, I'm not going to extend it, but they both said that they were in favor of the resolution.
I couldn't hear what you said. Say it again.
I said I have two cards here, and I do not have names, so it's, there's no way for me to call the people, but I was just announcing to...
Michael got a card in favor. I can't...
Okay. Okay, I have two cards that are in favor. Okay, come on, let's, two minutes.
Okay, water is more important than oil. Ojai has a history of being a leader in the evolution of human culture. We have to live up to that image. We can't be just another place that the oil companies have us over a barrel and try to, you know... How many people have spoken against the resolution who don't have an economic interest in the oil, you know? It's, it's like a biased witness. And I would say that it's much better to invest in the future. The future is not oil. The future's in solar and wind and things like that. And Ojai could take a leadership role in that, and we could show the way instead of just being an example of what not to do. We have to protect our water.
Okay, thank you.
The gentleman behind Brian did have a, when I saw him.
Yeah, yeah, if you turned a card in, come on in, just, and let us know who you are if you are willing to.
I'm not used to speaking to a group like this. It takes something really strong to bring me out.
We're friendly.
Dr. Gordon Neal. I tell you, I'm a doctor at this point, so you know you should listen. What I want all of you to do, not just the council, but all of you, go home, get out your computers, look up fracking, look it up under Google, find something good under fracking. Fracking is poisonous. It goes to our very depths. We have, we believe, seven to nine major aquifers that go under the Ojai Valley all the way down into Ventura. Actually, parts of it go clear off to the north as well. The fracking that happens under the ground has poisonous materials. Look up the list. They are major poisonous materials. I'll read some of them to you, hoping not to bore you to death and use my whole two minutes.
Okay.
Toluene, ethylbenzene, xylene, methylene. These are all things that have been used in Pennsylvania. Pennsylvania's a mess today because of the fracking. We don't want fracking in the Ojai Valley. It will stay there forever. You've got those nine aquifers out there. There's our water supply for the next five years. Once the water on top dries up, that water underneath is still there. We'd better be able to get it. We don't want it filled with things that you wouldn't want in your coffee cup right now. That's my statement. I have a grandson, and I'm very proud to be here, and just for your information, I just put solar roof on my house today. I wish everybody else would do the same.
Thank you. Okay, I have one more card. Gordon?
That was, that was good.
Oh, this is, oh, you were Gordon?
Yes.
Okay.
We found the card.
Yeah, Gordon, you...
We found Gordon.
Nice job for not speaking to groups like this before. Okay.
Is the public hearing closed?
It's not a public hearing. It was just a topic. What is the council's pleasure?
I'm ready to make a motion. There's a reason why some countries ban fracking, are already banned fracking, and as many of the speakers said, water is more important than oil. We can live without oil. If we had no oil, we would adapt, but we cannot live without clean water. That's the bottom line. So I want to make a motion to adopt the resolution at the city of Ojai opposing new and oil/gas drilling and hydraulic fracturing lease sales within the Ojai Valley in areas that are inconsistent with current use and jeopardize water resources and air quality in the Ojai Valley. And do I need to make a separate motion for the letter?
Yeah, one motion.
Okay, and also to address the letter, you probably took a note on that, to draft a letter as, from the city of Ojai.
May I just like to clarify? I'm not in disagreement with councilmen...
Do we have a second, though?
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay.
I'm not in disagreement with what Councilman Fran, Councilwoman Francina just said. What I want to make sure is, do we have, what right do we have to... We don't have any rights to stop existing. What we're, what I think we want to oppose is any new. I'm not sure if that's what you said, if I heard that correctly.
New oil and gas drilling. It's on page 63, the resolution.
Yeah, yeah. We're expressing an opinion to oppose.
It's also...
We don't really have any authority to control it.
Last line on 6-5.
Yeah, new.
Okay, well, I thought, for some reason, I thought I heard, and I'm sorry, that's what I wanted to clarify, old, and I'm, and I'm not sure if we have that right, but I am, obviously, I'm opposed to all fracking, but I just don't, I don't want us to say something that we can't stand behind or isn't valid or truthful.
I think it's clear. Is it clear?
Mr. City Attorney?
I understand it. The council has the power to take a policy position opposed to both new oil and gas drilling and associated fracking activities, and even to be opposed to existing oil and gas drilling and fracking activities. As I understand it, none exist within the city's land use power, none exist within the city's jurisdiction, so this is a policy statement regarding activities within the county. And I recognize before the comment is made, there is a portion of this that happens within the Ojai area of interest and within the Ojai city sphere of influence, both of which are areas within the county over which you have a certain amount of jurisdiction, not primary permitting power, but rather power to provide comments to the county, and the county must consider the city's general plan.
Well, I think this is also a communication, not to the county necessarily, limited to that, but to B L M.
Certainly, and this is a communication for the broader...
And that's important, is the communication to B L M.
And I also think to the state...
The governor.
Dogger.
Okay. Further questions, if not? Are we ready for the question?
Just a comment of what really got my attention.
You what?
What really got my attention was next to Thatcher School on land conservancy use of mineral rights. That was, that's what really got my attention.
Okay. Roll call, I guess?
Councilmember Wyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Lats?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes. Okay, before we go to the...
I'll do public comment.
The next topic here, we'll go to public comment. Do we have some cards under? Oh, we have 16, so it's the same rule, two minutes...
Ground.
Two minutes apiece, and thanks, everybody, for having stayed within their two minutes. That was really quite remarkable for our meetings. Okay, I've got Tara Jeffries.
Is that supposed to be for five?
Oh, just a second, that's...
Is that four?
We're four, we're on number four.
Public comment.
This is public...
Items not on the agenda, right? Items not on the agenda?
Oh, that's right, we're past that, yeah.
Okay, we haven't got to the number five yet, sorry. Okay, Dee Reed?
Public communication, yeah.
I'm assuming these are now public comments, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Dee?
We're in public communication.
Dee, come on down, and Deborah Pender, you're on deck.
Hi, I'm Dee Reed. I live at 255 South Lamita. I'm here to encourage you to consider a resolution acknowledging that climate change is, in fact, an emergency, and thereby committing Ojai to do all that we can to dramatically reduce our greenhouse gas emissions before it's too late. The fact that we have three, maybe more, items on our agenda tonight that are really about climate change underscores the fact that it is an emergency. I understand there's a group that's probably going to ask you to formally look at a resolution for discussion at a future meeting, but I just want to underscore that it's permeating everything we do. I know that you are already aware, of course, of the serious threat posed by climate change. We've seen its impacts: extreme temperatures, drought, and wildfires. But because climate change is an emergency, I appreciate the steps you have already taken to begin reducing our carbon footprint. The Clean Power Alliance agreement for 100% of our electricity from renewable resources, changing our landscape equipment to all-electric. These actions make me proud to live in Ojai and to have you as my public officials. But to see significant measurable reductions in greenhouse gas emissions, we will need to do a lot more. And when I say "we," I mean you and us, the entire community. Because climate change is an emergency, we will need to update the land use plans with measurable climate action goals and develop specific actionable policies, including ways to incentivize the best practices for sustainable housing, zoning, transportation, agriculture, energy, anything that is affected by climate change. Because climate change is an emergency, I hope you will renew your support for Ojai Valley Green Coalition. I know that'll be discussed later. But that community garden is probably the only visible tangential example of your commitment to climate change, because they are sequestering carbon every day in that garden, and they've had educational workshops showing how all of us can do the same thing in our homes. Because climate change is an emergency, I also hope that you, what you just did, support the resolution opposing the new permits for oil and gas. And I would underscore that to reduce oil and gas emissions, we must reduce oil and gas transmission and extraction dramatically in order to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions dramatically, and that I think we're all committed to make sure that that transition includes good jobs in solar, energy, and wind, of which there are many. For all these reasons, I believe that considering a resolution declaring a climate emergency is an important step towards elevating your commitment. You already have a commitment. Your actions speak louder than words. But it will serve as a reminder that we must find ways to dramatically reduce climate change as we consider every aspect of life in this very, very special community. Thank you again for what you're already doing and what I know that you will do going forward.
May I ask, say something quick? Dee, Dee, I have a request. Will you please take a photograph of all the bicycles out there and send it to me?
Yeah, well, I don't know if my flash will work. Yeah, I will.
If you can, or someone else. I need, I need a picture.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Deborah, you're up. Jack Weber, you're on deck.
Thank you. Deborah Pendry, 309 Riverside Road. I live in Oakview. And to tie into the last agenda item about transition, it is hard, and we can't have resolutions and ordinances in a vacuum. We do have to tie in our infrastructure, especially with that type of conversation. Part of that conversation and infrastructure is a new club in town, the Ojai Ride and Roll. I've been up here a couple other times talking about our new group. And I want to say that we had a very successful bike, walk, scoot-to-school week, May 13 through 17. We collected about 1,100 tickets from participants. This were the kids from Topa Topa, Miners Oaks, and...
Miramonte.
Miramonte, thank you. And they all got to get their name into a running for a whole bunch of great prizes. So we, I felt like we really enthused the kids. The Ojai Police Department came out with policemen on bikes. It was a lot of fun. They did a rodeo. So we're trying to get on a roll, roll here. Now, what we invite you to do is, riders of all ages, to join our bike brigade. It's the official group bike ride in Ojai's July 4th parade. We'll be gathering at the Matilla High School Athletic Field, which is at the corner of Ojai Valley and Country Club Drive. And so 4th of July is Thursday of next week. We're asking people to be there around 9:00 a.m. on, on the Thursday with your bike and your helmet. I forgot my helmet. Look for the bright yellow Ojai Ride and Roll t-shirts many of us will be wearing. Feel free to decorate your bike and show why you love to cycle and why it's good for the environment with signs. And we're going to try to make signs while we're there, if you can't, at home. If you didn't catch all that, you can go to ohivallagreencoalition.org and get more details. And why do we now exist and hope to continue on? Because we believe safety and respect is a two-way street for all of us, no matter our mode of transportation choice. And I wanted to share the partnerships is...
Thank you. Jack...
Deborah, give it to me.
Jack Weber, you're... And Michelle Ellison's on deck.
It's really heartening listening to all this tonight, isn't it? My name is Jack Weber, once again. I practice medicine here in Ojai, also an author and a naturalist in the spirit of John Muir and Thoreau. I look forward to working with you in the coming weeks and months regarding all the issues shared here tonight, especially around climate crisis. On behalf of Ojai, I'm here to encourage you to declare climate emergency. Climate emergency is a first symbolic gesture of solidarity with which we can follow up with real steps to reduce emissions and waste. I imagine you already know how dire our climate crisis is. If you don't, please let me know, and I'm happy to share with you chapter two of a book I just completed. It alone contains 250 citations to studies and data evidencing our very grim climate predicament and future. I invested thousands of hours of research for the book, and at the end of it, I realized the best response I can make is to rebel against our collective extinction. Nor do I speak from a lack of personal experience. Last year, I lost my farm, my home, my clinic, and my entire neighborhood to climate disaster. Declaring climate emergency is a first step on this journey to save ourselves and the world. The people of Ojai, the wildlife and natural resources we love in this valley, and especially children all over the world, are in grave danger. By declaring climate emergency, we'll join 658 other legislating bodies that preside over 119 million people all over the world. You would therefore not be alone in this declaration, but stand out with others who are at the helm of reason and survival. Please join this noble list of climate leaders. Science says we're going to hell in a handbasket quickly. There's no time to waste.
Thank you, Jack.
Please act.
Michelle with Shalom on deck.
Good evening, Michelle Ellison. I'm here with others during public comment to request the same, that the city of Ojai, at the earliest possible time, adopt a resolution declaring a climate state of emergency. As Jack had shared, hundreds of communities around, local governments around the world have done so, entire countries. We've had four countries declare a state of emergency around the climate, and within California, the city of Berkeley, Oakland, San Francisco, cities are declaring this climate emergency as a way to mobilize action around climate change. And I don't know if any of you have seen the clip John Oliver recently put out in this last month. He has colorful language, but essentially, he says, "The world is on fire." We, this is the greatest existential threat we're facing. We don't have time to waste. I would love to actually see a show of hands in the room of how many people recognize our climate state of emergency. Can I have a show of hands? Most of us. So I think the time to act is now, as yesterday, and so I urge you to do what the rest of us are asking you to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Shalom, you're up. Andy Gilman, you're on deck, if you're still here.
I'm just public comment, general.
This is public comment.
That's what this is.
It sounds like a theme, but you're right. Okay, go ahead.
Good evening.
Good evening, I'm Shalom Joshua, I live in the city of Ojai. I'm aware that this is a very familiar gathering. I'm aware that we do this regularly. I'm not sure that everyone is aware about how remarkable it is, how remarkable it is for people of differing opinions to be in one place and to be able to discuss them and come to some at least beginnings of resolutions. This is a thing that is, is given to us as a guarantee in the First Amendment to the Constitution, wherein it says, among a few other things, that we have the right to assembly and the right to freedom of speech. With all of this in mind, I only have one concern that is immediate, that doesn't fit this whole panorama, and that is the prohibition on speaking publicly meaningfully about the health issues of 5G. It has been made off the record, off conversation, not allowed, not to be discussed, not to be brought forward to authorities, not to be brought to the persons who are perpetrating it, not to be confronting the government that has caused it to be brought to us. We are facing something that is unique. This is not what is supposed to be happening in our society. We are supposed to be living by our Constitution. The Constitution gives us the right to discuss this meaningfully because it is a profound health issue. We were able here to discuss other profound issues. We need to be able to discuss 5G as an issue too. One last thing. In New Mexico, there has been a filing in federal court on this very thing. It was done earlier this year. We'll have to see where it goes. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy, you're up, and Kevin?
Thanks for having me back here again. I wanted to invite you to three things the Agora Foundation's going to be doing soon. This Sunday, we're working with Ojai Unified School District, and it's the beginning of a series of free workshops inviting the community to come and talk about innovation in public education. So this is just the start, and I've been very impressed with Tiffany, and I think we have a real chance at something great. So it's three to five this Sunday at 417 Bryant Circle, our office. The second event is Sunday, July 28th, and it's an Ojai Chautauqua panel at Matilah. Is legal cannabis good for Ojai? I'm in the midst of the research now, and I think it's going to be a really interesting panel. And thanks for the help with research from colleagues here. Finally, Sunday, August 25th, I just put it on the website, it's the social ecology of education in our valley and why every single citizen should care about the future of education in our valley. So that'll be again, Sunday, August 25th, and I'm just putting that panel together now. And with my last minute, I want to tie a couple of these things together. I've been thinking about the proposed 3% tax on cannabis, the manufacturing, and then also the dispensaries, and just an idea is, if you, and I realize we're talking a lot about how to carve up the money situation, but if you allocated some percentage of the tax to the public school system, I was trying to think of a way of alleviating some of the concerns that some have about cannabis in the valley in general. You may have discussed that already. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Okay, Kevin? And Lorena, you're on deck.
Hi, my name is Kevin Barron, and I come before you as a longtime resident of Ojai, Thomas Fire evacuee, and a very proud father of two daughters who are here with me tonight speaking. I'm a staff, I was a staff member for 24 years at the Institute for Theoretical Physics in Santa Barbara, and I'm not an expert, but I have engaged in some of the leading physicists on climate science for over two decades. And I can assure you that the climate crisis is as real as a tooth abscess currently in my gum. If I was to ignore it, and just call it a toothache, the consequences would be life-threatening. So when a doctor tells us, as it has tonight, the potential dangers, we need to take action. In the same way, we need to take action on this climate emergency. Unfortunately, climate treaties at the international level has been shown to be ineffective. Just today, a new report came out from the UN rapporteur on human rights, showing that the worst effects are visited upon the poor and the least prepared. But many studies have shown that some of the most effective actions come at the local level.
Yes.
Just, sorry, we must increase our resilience, our local resilience to fires, droughts, and other extreme conditions. Like preventative health, we have much a greater impact by taking action before than, rather than after. A good example of what we can do at the local level is to ban fracking in our community, as has been discussed. As we learned with tobacco, we need to take strong proactive steps to raise the alarm on the health effects of burning carcinogens and ingesting it in our lungs. Similarly, we need to take action to stop burning fossil fuels and injecting it into the lungs of our environment. This is an emergency. The IPCC and every scientific report keep shortening the window on how many years we have to avert the consequences of the climate crisis that we are already in the midst of. And like all emergencies, we must clearly assess the situation and act. As our civic leaders, we are counting on you to take the action initiative to declare a climate emergency and ban fracking. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Okay, Lorena? With Catherine? Is that Batta or Bar?
Hi, my name is Lorena Maldonado, and I am with Extinction Rebellion Ojai, which is a, a group of climate activists, a beautiful people, really, coming together, and we're doing our best. I come to share my hope with the city council to take action in this ecological crisis. Being the youngest one here, which is, I'm not sure that's a good thing at this point, I'm worried, and I understand that the actions have already been taken, and I'm proud, and that, just thank you. It really, it brings me this great joy that it already is being seen, and there's been movement, and we just need to take what comes after. This is a climate emergency, and it's just, it's going to get worse, and there's just so many things that we cannot reverse already. I'm shaking a lot, I'm sorry, I don't do this. With that being said, I thank you all for listening, and...
Thank you, Lorena.
Thank you.
Catherine? And Neil, you're...
Hello, my name is Catherine Barron. I'm so grateful to live and have grown up in this phenomenal valley with such an incredibly caring community. I'm here again tonight to respectfully ask the city council to continue their service in protecting what we love about Ojai. And I will keep showing up however I can to ensure that this diverse and beautiful place in which we live is conserved. I'm sure I share some memories with those in this room, of growing up exploring these bountiful creeks and mountains, and each encounter with local lizards and frogs and remarkable species of foxes and birds of prey, expanding my wonder and awe to be alive in Ojai. In the 26 years that I've lived here, however, we've all witnessed degradation of the land and the fellow species we live with and upon whom we depend. Increased fires, severe and frequent droughts, leading to ever more difficult food production, polluted oceans with unsafe seafood, these were not normal or frequent when I was a little girl. I have participated firsthand in research at UC Santa Barbara that showed how extracting and burning fossil fuels has damaged our ocean and dangerously heated our climate. I ask that we prevent further damage to our land, damage to ourselves, and damage to the younger generation who will be hit hardest by our pollution and depletion of natural resources by joining the international campaign to declare a climate emergency. The Climate Emergency Resolution helps put energy and motivation into mobilizing our community and stopping extracting and using harmful fossil fuels, as well as discontinue our dependency on poisonous petroleum byproduct fertilizers and pesticides. Declaring a climate emergency is a critical step local governments have been taking around the world to defend ourselves from the toxic damage done by chemical-heavy agriculture and fossil fuel extraction, and set a precedent for providing more renewable energy jobs, as well as cheaper sources of energy when the petroleum subsidies are taken out of the picture. Please oppose any new drilling projects and existing ones. It will not be possible to protect the safety of life in this city if we continue further fossil fuel extraction and climate degradation. Please declare a climate emergency. Thank you.
Thank you. Neil? And Donna, you're next.
Good evening.
I'm the assistant.
Mayor and city council and special assistants. Happy to be back up here again this year here.
Anna!
Hopefully it'll calm everybody a little later on, anyway, at least.
Thank you.
I appreciate all the support we've been having over this last six months. We were possibly going to be closing down the Ojai Valley Lavender Festival this year here because just, we didn't have enough participation, but we had a, found a dynamic duo that will actually be putting it on next year.
Whoa.
So you're all invited this year here to come back and help us celebrate this Saturday from 10 till 5:00 in the afternoon, and hope you enjoy it and have a great evening. And Cindy Mullins is our current president, and she's the one that passed out the lavender fest, the lavender everybody, and it came from the Ojai Valley Lavender Farms in Upper Ojai. We do have several lavender farms that are open, so you can go up there and visit them anytime that you want to.
I say if you want to change the climate, grow more lavender. This year, we had thought this might be our last festival, but a couple of really wonderful and talented people have stepped in and said they will take the Ojai Valley Lavender Festival into the future. So we will celebrate this year, and we'll see you again in 2020. And thank you so much for your support through the years. We love you, city council, you've been great to us.
Thank you. Okay, Donna? And Jeff, you're on deck.
I'm here tonight just as a concerned citizen, a thoughtful concerned citizen, a resident of Ojai, and I simply want to join others who have spoken and urge you to take a very hard look at passing a climate crisis resolution so that we really can start addressing this. And I think as a small town, we have a greater outlook than lots of other places, and so we should be showing the world how to do it. And other, you know, 700, something like 700 jurisdictions have already passed it, so we should join them. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Jeff, you're up, and Peggy Lasera is on deck.
Good evening. My name's Jeff Otterbine, I've been a teacher and educator here in the valley since 1985. Many things have been said about this climate emergency, and so I won't repeat too much of it. And first on my list here, I was going to tell you that I was feeling quite alone and not knowing what to do about this crisis. And then over the last 15, 20 minutes, I'm not feeling so alone. And that gives me hope, and so now what I would like to do is ask you all to join this movement and declare a climate emergency. And in so doing, this is what I think you can give to the world. It feels like on a local level, a government, local government like this has a lot of influence in our community, to our public, and then to stretch out to go to Ventura. And Ventura is very responsible for a lot of things going on here, their agricultural processes and all kinds of the oil, all that. If we, as a city, can pass this and influence Ventura, that would be fabulous. Ventura, then the state of California, and the planet. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Peggy, you're up, and Chelsea, you're on deck.
Hi, my name is Peggy Lasera, I'm a resident of Ojai, and hey, I'll pull out the doctor card, too. I'm a behavioral neuroscientist, a behavioral biopsychologist, and I'm here in a couple of capacities today. First, as a member of a newly formed group called Committed Citizens with a deep bow to Margaret Mead, along with Teresa Hartman, Donna Fryermuth, and Lori Hammer. We're forming, we're putting together a film series, an ecological film series, that's being supported by the Sane Living Center, which I'm also affiliated with. Aubrey Balkin is kindly allowing us to show a, the first film will be minimalist, but it'll be a series of films about all the things that we can do to help avert a climate crisis and to live a saner existence. I only have 49 seconds left, so I want to say that we are a tourist economy, and I, this is me as a private citizen, we're a tourist economy, and our valley is serviced by people who are making $12 to $15 an hour. They can't rent an apartment in Ojai. They drive in from Oxnard, and if we don't take a step back and look at the big picture, two years ago, right after the, it wasn't even two years ago, it was a year and a half ago, right after the Thomas Fire, I proposed a new vision for Ojai, and that was shifting our economy to an eco-education tourism economy. Everything follows an energetic economy. Your behavior, my behavior, all life on earth and the physical environment follow an energetic economy. If we can start thinking in terms of developing Ojai as a place where others come to learn how to live, how to avert crises of earthquakes, fire, flood, drought, and...
Climate emergency.
Climate emergency.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm 21 seconds over, thank you.
Okay, we'll put that on your account. Come on up, Chelsea.
Thank you, Council. Chelsea Setula, I'm a resident, small business owner here in Ojai. I'm a relatively new member of Extinction Rebellion. I joined this group because I believe we need to act now to avoid catastrophic impacts to this beautiful planet. I'd like to encourage you to join your fellow cities of Berkeley, Davis, Oakland, Petaluma, San Francisco, Santa Cruz, the entire populations of Canada, Ireland, and Portugal, among many other regional governments in declaring this climate emergency. It's just a basic first step to immobilize people, to mobilize resources, to start avoiding the problems that we're just facing right now. If only we would discuss taxing fossil fuels and our use of gas the way we talk about taxing cannabis.
We're, we're doing that.
Right, yeah.
Because the ultimate, the black market for gas is a bicycle.
It's, it's happening, it's happening.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Chelsea. Okay. That concludes our public comment period. Let's take a five-minute recess, and those who...
Are you sure?
The what? Are we sure what? It's all the cards we have.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't understand with the card here. There was an option to mark two places, public comment and, and an item?
And I did the same. I did the same.
Okay, does somebody out there have something to say that hasn't already been said? We'll be happy to make an exception in that case, but...
We're doing that now.
Oh, oh, yeah, that's, that's still, that's still coming up. That's not public comment. You're safe.
That's next.
Okay, Chris Bird.
Much shorter than two minutes. One, I do not live in Ojai, I just, you know, I should tell you that. I live across the street from Ojai. I live on Del Norte. Had to have some other disclaimer. Yeah, please.
You want to be in next?
An emergency, this is an emergency, that's it. That's the whole thing. It's just an emergency, right?
Okay.
Yes, we got it.
Okay, thank you. Were you, didn't...
Did I put it in the card? I did, I promise.
Okay, that's...
Hi, I'd like to start by acknowledging that we are on Schumashland. Just want to say that, I think we should take every opportunity to remember that, remember our heritage. I'm T.O.B. Barron. It's weird to not be in that spot and be up here instead. I live in Miners Oaks, for whatever that's worth. I've been a resident of this valley for more years than I care to admit in public. When I first moved here, I remember a classmate, Blake Kazmeyer, coming up here every two weeks and asking you guys for a skate park. And it took longer than Blake had, but we made that happen, we manifested that. So I've seen the power of this community, and I'm so damn proud to be your neighbor tonight. I've seen the power of this body and what we can achieve. And I'm asking you, please, to declare a climate emergency. It's not just a symbolic gesture, we need to acknowledge the truth. I would also ask you to marry that with divesting. Wells Fargo is a big supporter of pipelines, and that's business as usual, we can't afford to keep doing that. And to institute policies supporting sustainability, and to do so as soon as humanly possible. I can throw facts at you all day, you guys already know this is truly an emergency. We've lived through it, we've had personal experience with it via Thomas. I lost two friends in the aftermath of that. The debris from the fire complicated their lungs, and they're no longer with us. I don't know how you put a price on that, and this is what we're facing with climate change. So I am asking you to please put this on the agenda as soon as possible. Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to take a five-minute recess. Okay, we're gonna take a five-minute recess, and for those of you who are interested in hanging around for the rest of the agenda, you're welcome.
And Drown is next.
Drown is next.
Drown is next.
We'll make it a quick
Bicycles to ride. The, I have pictures available that can show you where that's being utilized effectively and has passed approval by, by fire departments and things of that nature. Goes back to ninety-four. There are, the other alternatives are, do not have any accommodations for bicycles. And in fact, the, the other alternatives create hazardous conditions for bicycles. Because if you have nine-foot lanes with any kind of obstruction next to them, it's just not enough room for two-way traffic and bicycles to coexist. There's trucks that are, are seven, seven-and-a-half feet. Councilmember Haney might actually have one that goes all the way to eight. Just kidding. And eight, eight, you know, seven-and-a-half foot vehicles in a nine-foot lane is just not a safe thing to have bicycles working with. And the chokers are particularly of concern because they can pop up out of, out of anywhere. They cut it down to nine feet and that becomes a bicycle trap, a bicycle hazard, similar to the one that's been created on Ventura. And my point is simply this, bicyclists should not be used as traffic calming devices. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Russell.
I have my mic here. Thank you. Shauna?
Hi, thank you again for having us back and for putting this on the agenda. We're really grateful for that. I'm a, I'm a resident of North Drown and a mother of a four-year-old. There's so many young kids on our street now and so many animals, many of which have gotten hit and killed on our street, two just got killed again last week. So I'm just here again to say, please allow us to put these speed pumps and also be a demonstration for what's possible, ways to slow people down and be more aware in their communities and create a safe community in this town. So, thank you for putting this on the agenda and we hope that it passes. And yeah, we just want to create a safe town that we can all enjoy and make sure our children and animals are safe here.
Okay. Thank you. Those are all the cards I have.
May I ask a question?
Just let me just, are there any more cards? Okay, question?
Do you know how many homes are on North Drown? I, I'm asking because I've been calculating how much it would cost to do everything. Yeah, I just...
I had, I actually made a list of all the houses on our block and...
I mean, the whole, the whole street.
I only, I can only speak to, from Grand to Pleasant because that's the only, the area that I can...
Okay. Okay, I'll find out. I just wondered if you knew.
But I think there was forty homes, thirty homes?
I don't remember.
Well, you're twenty-one hundred feet long and your parcels are between a hundred and seventy-five across. So let's say if we went a hundred into twenty, you know, into the twenty-one, a hundred lineal feet that there is there, that's the easiest way and then multiply it times two.
I was always bad at math. I was really good, I was really good at English and history.
Right now, because I thought I could calculate that real quickly.
Okay.
In my head and I went, that ain't gonna happen.
I can, I can go count, I just haven't done it yet.
It looks like you got roughly twenty-one on each side, so you have roughly forty-two.
Yeah, about forty, that, that seems about right.
Okay.
I know when Moss calculated the speed humps for the ones he was looking at, it was between eight and nine thousand dollars.
Right. Right. Him and I looked at the same side.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
You don't get credit just for showing your work, you have to have the right answer. But you are in calculus, so it's sort of, that's close.
I did it.
Good, thank you.
I bet you all agree with me.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you guys. Anything else from staff?
Yeah, is Grant gonna ask?
Grant there for staff? Comment?
Are you gonna explain?
Sousa, please, through the chair. Okay. There's gonna be plenty of time, we'll take care of it all. Okay. Staff?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, I think that City Manager covered most of the basics there, but I did want to mention that about a year and a half ago that Moss Fidal did contact the city and we worked with him at that time, you know, we did, stepped up, the police stepped up enforcement, we had a speed trailer out there, we added stop signs, we monitored the traffic. And all that was fairly effective because a year and a half later here, we've, it used to be about six percent of the traffic would be enforceable, which was kind of in the report there that meant they exceeded thirty-five miles per hour. Now it's down to about three percent. So that's a significant reduction. I know it's not with the residents because their, their concern is the chart shows inside the report, right, is anybody traveling at twenty miles per hour, ninety percent of people survive if they're hit. At forty miles per hour, ten percent of them survive. So I know there's that concern. The trick is the, the speed enforcement is very difficult, right? We're only dealing with about five hundred cars per day, this is very light traffic on that street. It's not a pass-through anyplace else, it goes up to a dead-end area. And so there, it's fairly light traffic, but I know for the residents that's, it's not easy to have anybody speeding period and cars move. So, staff is recommending we go with this approach, but as, as a demonstration project because there could, the most common issue with putting speed cushions or speed humps in is it diverts the traffic. So the perfect diversion on this street is, if you, just to the west is Daly Road. So Daly Road is the same length, it's, it's got curb, gutter and sidewalks, so they're, I think in general those homes feel more protected, they can have cars out front and they got a front yard that's better delineated than they are on Drown. But I think that's, staff's major concern is that we put in these speed humps to divert all the traffic over to Daly, they start complaining about it, they want humps. And they, the humps are often, they're very effective, they're physical and they're very effective, but they often divert traffic and it also sets a precedent where the city starts putting these in everywhere. They're not, they're not cheap to install and maintain every time you pave a street, it's quite an effort. So I think each one of these little panels you put in take about eight bolts, you gotta drill into the asphalt, put in sleeves, epoxy man, it'll take our staff approximately, you know, three-quarters of a day per, per, per hump to put these things in, they're a pretty good amount of effort. And then you've got options of signage and so on that go along with them. Some, some communities push back and they don't like the noise. A lot of people who have pickup trucks, especially contractors, they, they rattle over these things, very noisy and, and people can hit the brakes hard coming into them and accelerate. Anyways, there's a lot of issues related to it. And so I just wanted to flag that to you.
I gotta go Sousa and then Kenyon.
Let's add a staff question.
Oh, I have a question. Now I forgot my question. Wait, wait, okay, go ahead, I'll think of it.
We'll come back, go ahead.
Do you agree with Mr. Sidney's analysis of three-six foot as being the optimum to accommodate multimodal of cars and bikes?
I think in this condition, we only have five hundred cars per day. I've been up there, looking at it, taking photographs, you can often stand for ten or fifteen minutes in that street and not see a car. So you'll, you'll get a rush in the morning going to school, going to work, you'll get a little rush in the afternoon as well. But this is not...
You're talking about the, the dimensions, he was recommending three-six foot instead of four.
So I think the chances of a bicycle and a car intersecting at the same time there are so miniscule, it, it is very easy for a bike to factor it, a car and dodge each other as you go through there.
But, but...
Are you against or for the three-six foot?
I would say doing a standard fire truck spacing that, that is recommended.
It's the four.
Should be adequate, but I'd like to talk it over with Russell to see what, how the fire department works with that if it doesn't cost extra money.
My turn? Hey, so you, what you said was critical, the rush hour, that's where, that's, that's the problem. Because the bicycles and the cars converge, if we get all the kids riding their bikes to school, they will converge with the morning traffic. So that's, that's one point.
And then keep in mind, in this area, right, you wouldn't have, it's not a direction people travel with bicycles to school, right? You either go directly east-west over to school or...
Oh, they take the other, the other route?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But still, every street should accommodate bicycles safely. So my thinking, I, I read, I thought the report was excellent, I really thought it was great how you described a complete street retrofit of Drown. I mean, I would like to see a complete street retrofit of the entire city. And all of this discussion just points, remember a few months ago, I tried to bring forward that we have a valley-wide twenty-five mile, mile per hour speed limit and that would take care of a lot of the issues. Then you can't, then traffic wouldn't get pushed over because it's the same on the next street. But the issue of traffic getting pushed over is absolutely no reason not to do it because every street could request, request traffic calming and especially if the residents are willing to pay for it. So, you know, that's good. So my, looking at this, I thought economically you would get the most bang for your bucks, I guess you would say, with this alternative one and alternative two, but I would change alternative two so that it would accommodate bicycles as well as pedestrians. I mean, there must be some way to stripe that street to narrow the traffic lane.
Six hundred thousand? Have you been on that street Sousa?
Yes, yes.
Sousa, the most... Not just striping, that street has other problems. The street has a lot of...
You're talking about the six hundred thousand dollar option?
No, ten thousand.
Well, you said alternative two.
Alternative two, alternative one and two. It's just, I'm just trying to open up a discussion. I mean, of all, I, I thought a combination, I mean, ideally you would do the complete, a complete street retrofit, include narrow-to-drive lanes, on-street parking, sidewalks, street trees and bioswells. You know, that's, it's always good to put the vision out there, I think. And then the residents can be aware and they can discuss it.
Certainly the stripings are relatively inexpensive, if you want to combine some options and make this kind of a demonstration street.
Yeah.
You put the striping and pull it in, put some speed humps in, you could even do a few chokers, maybe the neighborhood works together if the city, for instance, did the saw cut, it's very quick, maybe some residents are interested in planting the trees and casing out some of the chokers.
Well, I'm not sure about the chokers because there are places in town where I get pushed into the traffic. So I'm not, I don't know about the chokers, but, and that's not in alternative two, it doesn't mention chokers.
Right.
But, yeah, whatever you do should consider the needs of all users of the road because things are changing. On my way over here tonight, I saw two kids without parents, you know, maybe aged five and seven, on scooters, okay? The scooters are coming whether we like it or not, okay? More and more people are gonna, you know, all the, the whole dynamic of traffic is going to change into the future. So whatever we do should accommodate, you know, it should have a vision, it should accommodate all users of the road. Whatever we see now is not what we're gonna see five years from now.
Certainly speed humps are not the most attractive approach, but it's a very effective approach.
Yeah, and it seems like a good immediate solution.
I'm gonna go ahead and make a, make a motion because I think it's best to, while I understand the broad vision, I think right now the important thing is to do something specific and learn from it. And that's why I'm gonna make a motion to approve number two with the advice to please talk with Mr. Sidney about the bicycle issue carefully and the fire truck issue, but approve, make a motion to approve number one and two so we can get something going and learn from it.
A second, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Okay, if not...
Well, yeah, Mayor, just, you know, I'm going along with this, but, but I think the most important thing is, the whole idea behind this is, is an observation, is to do something short-term and just to make sure that, that it does what it says it's gonna do. Again, it's twenty-one hundred feet long, you know, again, you're gonna do three sets of cushions, so, or do you need four, do you need six?
Or two, yeah.
So, and these are temporary versus permanent. So again, I don't think we, I, I, as much as I'd like to spend six hundred thousand dollars of Sousa's hard-earned money to do a complete street project on that one, I don't know if that's what we want to do or even think about right now. What we need to do is try something and see if it's effective. And if it's effective, and I don't know how you're gonna manage that either, we need to do it, but how are we gonna monitor it for its effectiveness? Are we gonna be able to put manpower, manpower behind it to make the critical observations of, are they leaving Drown to Daly or, you know, things of that nature? So that's why it has, it has to be, it can't be permanent, but it's gotta be something that we hope solves that problem.
And we can, for your information, we can monitor, we have a black box, pole-mounted traffic monitor, so it'll tell the amount of traffic, the speed of the traffic. And we're, we've already monitored Drown significantly, we're monitoring daily right now to see how that will go.
And, and then the, the final thought on this is when we do the, the overlays this year, it sure be nice to actually look at that street and address those nine-foot or eleven-foot swells on each side of that street. Because any traffic that we move from that road left or right is gonna impact anyone on a car or on a bicycle. That's how bad that street is. You can see it just by the pictures here.
Yeah, that's, that's the issue of these speed humps, right? When you overlay, they're difficult to pull up, there's a lot of work going into installation. So to pull them up for an overlay is not cheap. Installation is one step, maintenance is always a big factor we all forget about.
Hi, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Well, I'm sure we're gonna get reports, feedback from the residents. The residents are gonna be the, the judge.
Well, they'll be part of it.
Yeah, they'll be, well, part of it. But, why do I keep forgetting what I was gonna say? Hang on.
We're gonna try something.
Yeah, we're gonna try, oh, can you clarify, what portion is, are the residents paying, they're paying, contributing, right?
The proposal is the residents pay for the materials and the city install.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
Okay, ready?
Vote. There's already a motion.
Okay. Do we need a roll call on this?
Can I be part of the discussion when you meet with, with Russell?
I, I think a roll call is not required because as posed, the only expenditure is not hard costs, it's just in-kind, so consensus, you know, voice vote's fine.
Okay, is there any objection to the motion?
Nope.
Hearing none, so ordered?
Let's see what happens.
Well, proceeds and hope it's successful and then we can export it to other streets.
Mr. Grant, Mr. Grant, could I be part of the discussion when you meet, when you meet with Russell Sidney, I'd like to be part of that.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Budget time.
Where are we here? Number two?
Back to, back to budget?
Thank you for your...
Thanks a lot, guys.
Really powerful citizen activism, thank you. Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, we have our item number two, fiscal year 2019, 2020, budget review and adoption. So we will, City Manager, is there anything you want to say before we open the hearing?
I think we've, we've said it all at the workshop, so...
Okay, so I'm opening the public hearing and I have three cards so far. Jamie Fleming, Jamie, you're up first. Oh, I have four cards. And Cynthia Greer, you're next.
Jamie Fleming, Chamber of Commerce. It was interesting today, I was the guest speaker, speaking to the Rotary Club of Ojai West. And I was mainly talking about what the, you know, bringing them up to speed, what the chamber does and get them to know me better. And when I finished speaking, I opened it up for questions. And the biggest, number one and number two questions I kept getting were, how can we make Ojai more business-friendly? And I was kind of surprised, it was almost like I'd handed them a script for what's happening today. The other big question that they asked me was, why aren't we and how can we start attracting more businesses in here so that we are not so subject and dependent on tourism? And I luckily just looked at them, my mouth dropped open a little bit and I said, well, that's exactly what is kind of being discussed right now and even at the council. But it was kind of interesting that here I am speaking to a whole group of people and to have that be the main question everyone raises their hands on. And even in the prior meeting, to have it brought up, how we are very dependent on tourism, all that the chamber is, is offering is our help in trying to reach out so we start attracting businesses so that we can get into the, businesses that are Ojai branded, sustainable companies, green companies, what have you, so we can start getting jobs in here, build the tech space and what have you. So we're just still offering. I want to also say that if we're trying to be creative, that number that I saw up there, and we, I feel all the groups all have very good reasons to get funding. So in the spirit of compromise, which I hope everyone is gonna be willing to do, I kind of almost liked Randy's thought process. Sure, we're the unknown perhaps, hopefully most of you know all the good that we do do, how much I care and I'm always trying to propose things to help the city. But I'd be even willing to compromise and try the six-month plan and go back in front for the half-year funding if we could at least maybe be at the forty, which I think dramatically is a great compromise in helping us reduce that pie into different parts. Thirty might be a little low to really be effective and I hate to even venture and say I could be effective as a group with our, one hand tied behind our back, but I think if we could be around forty or above for six months, I think that would be very workable and still show a spirit of compromise and also try and do something that really I think would help the city, so...
Thank you, Jamie. Cynthia Greer? No Cynthia?
Yeah.
Okay, Brian Akins?
Hello again, Brian Akins, Historic Preservation Commission and Museum. Let's go to the museum. So, sixty thousand dollars, looked at the list here, that's what we've come to ask for you. Do we do that because we sit back and we say, oh, look, the museum or the city council is gonna give us sixty thousand dollars, let's just sit and wait and not do anything else? We are always actively looking to recruit, we have a new development group that's headed by Phil White, who was sitting here with me, some of the top people. That also includes other members of the community, many other members of the community that are on that. They are looking for set ways of raising funds that will last beyond an event that's taking place. Other things we're doing, Councilman Wierich was up there Sunday at the Taft Gardens, we invited all of the, put out a hundred flyers, invited all of the folks from Rancho Matilla because what we're trying to do is we're trying to get people to know more about the museum, to join the museum in whatever manner they want, make a donation in the museum, again, trying to extend our influence into people that we're not seeing come into the museum. However, we are seeing people come into the museum and the third Friday has been very successful, very slow, I was like, okay, but then I started doing the third Friday and saw all of these different people, families are coming in, families from out of town, families are bringing their families from out of town on third Friday, so that's a magnificent success. Our latest exhibit, Founding Familias, talks about an important segment of our valley's history. And so we're reaching out to that history, acknowledging that history, and those folks are coming in and enjoying it. So we are not sitting back on the money that we're asking you for, we are doing everything we can to continue to make the museum the fabulous place it is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Severo?
Good evening, Mayor Johnston, City Council members and staff, chief, and congratulations to our new City Manager, Mr. Vega. I'm here to, I'm wearing two hats today. First one is museum, you've had, you saw many of our board members here advocating for what the museum gives and offers to the community. It's our history, I think it's extremely important, also because it's, it is a city building and I think that they do a fab, we do a fabulous job with everything that we promote. And then the second hat that I'm wearing today is the Green Coalition. Today you've had, I've had the honor and you guys have had the honor to hear about climate emergency and environmental issues that are crucial for the city and the, and the community. And ever since I was in your seat and, and I was a liaison to the, the Green Coalition, I saw the value of this organization, now I sit back and even respect it more because a lot of the services that, that they offer is about doing, addressing climate change. And this area, this, last year we were able to succeed with delivering all our deliverables. I know it doesn't, it's hard to put on paper, but a lot of those services we've exceeded and we had so much in-kind donations, in volunteer hours, we made it really successful. And this year we really want to focus and focus on the city itself and focus on the demonstration garden. Talk about education, we talk about serving the community synergy in the middle of town, we want to create that, we want to form that partnership with the city of Ojai. Also celebrating climate change, what better way than to do it than Earth Day? This, this is our second year putting it on, on Libby Park with co-sponsor of the city of Ojai. Every year it has gotten bigger, every year we've decided to collaborate more and more with different organizations and we want to keep increasing that. And this is a way that we could address climate change and offer some positive quality of life that we talk about and, and focus all the different components, air, water, soil, everything incorporated. So I really hope that you take into consideration both of these organizations and what they're asking for, because I think we get, there's a lot of value and a lot of return on every dollar that you support these organizations. Thank you.
Thank you, Severo. Okay, that's all the cards I have.
Severo, I don't know if you'll know the answer, may I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Severo, could you speak a little bit more about the community garden? I, I didn't realize there wasn't a master plan, Councilmember Haney pointed that out to me.
No, there was never, as, going through research and working with the Public Works Department Director, we, we tried to see if there was a master plan, there isn't. So this year we are tasked with trying to get more information from the community and the, the demonstration community manager who was tar, Sailor, put a lot of different workshops to see, okay, what, what could we actually do back there? And she did compile some, some information, but we, we found that there was a lot of needs, a lot of potentials that needed to be addressed. This last year when, when we were going through our deliverables and trying to figure out what vision we have, but this year we really want to collaborate, especially with the city, to see, okay, what is that vision? Look, how could we start? And I look at it kind of like when we did the parks, the, the Libby Park, and that took a lot of effort and that took a lot of community building, the vision. The demonstration garden is a little bit more bigger in my eyes, it's a little bit, will take more time and effort, but we do want to develop a master plan eventually and we do want to develop, see how it could kind of flow with the, with Libby Park and the whole park plan that they, I think that was developed in the eighties, but, or it could have been seventies, but trying to look into that a little bit more.
It just seems to me that there would be a lot of community support for whatever funding is needed. It could come from members of the community, if, if, if the city can't do it right now, to develop, to, to really develop that area and tie it in with Libby Park. I think that's a, something that merits further, a lot of more discussion.
Absolutely, and we've, we've already tried a couple, we're working with the crew, we tried partnering, partnering with PACS and Ojai Land Conservancy and the crew to come up with this grant to start developing the vision this last year, I know it wasn't in the deliverables, but we actually tried to participate along with the Public Works Department. I know the chamber has been involved in talking. So the budget you have on there is, is just to start to developing that master plan, there's a bigger vision and it's a lot more expensive and this is an opportunity to collaborate with the whole community. So we see it, this as being part of the package to something a lot bigger, that's gonna cost a lot more money, so...
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll take this, is there no further cards or comments? We'll close the public hearing and the council will deliberate. Hearing is closed. What's the council's pleasure?
I don't have to go first.
I did, can I ask, I just wanted to be, can I ask questions or somebody else?
So we, Mayor, I'll, I'll...
Randy?
I'll start. The, so let's do the carryover from the, the budget session, the earlier one. So we know that we're working on a deficit right now of fifty-two thousand, correct? Fifty-two thousand? We came up with some additional funding to reduce that to twenty-seven thousand.
Right.
And then the, the other part of that conversation was, do we want to carry that twenty-seven thousand over and I guess run a negative instead of a balanced budget? And then the, the other question was actually looking at each of these different revenue requests from these outside groups and how we want to deal with them. So I think that's where we are now. We know that we're at a twenty-seven thousand dollar deficit in the budget. I think, I think as we look at what we can do or can't do regarding these other expenditures and how we'd like to fund some of this other needs from some of the other groups that have asked us, is gonna help us move that ball just a little further down the line in making that decision. So I would start out, first of all, with agreeing with Brian regarding the museum funding. I think the museum is, is essential to this community as a whole. It, it allows us to remember what we were, it allows us to remember where we are, and by understanding... remember what we were. It allows us to remember where we are, and by understanding those two principles of life, it'll help us to take us where we need to go. So, and I don't think we have any other way of actually doing that in this community. So, I have, I have, I have no idea how we could defund that. So, I would say that we leave that alone. The second request, I think, in the budget was an additional $4,000 from the arts community for some additional projects that they would like to do.
Acquisitions, I believe.
Acquisitions. So, I would, I would think that, that again, if we put that off this year to actually help us balance our budget, that I wouldn't be opposed to removing that $4,000 from the line item. Historic preservation, I think we talked about the $15,000 and how that can be allocated at any specific time during the fiscal year. So, again, that, I don't think there's a reasons to put that on the front end, but to leave that on the back end. So, then that puts us back down to the Green Coalition.
And Chamber.
Okay.
And Chamber.
Yeah, and the Chamber. So...
There's one more.
Go ahead.
When it's my turn, I'll ask.
Okay. So, at this point, that's where, I believe that's where we are. How do we fund the Chamber and at what level? And two, how do we fund the Green Coalition, and at what level?
I have a question. May I? Okay, we're, we're aware that Chelsea donated $5,000 for the shower utility vehicle, for the Ojai Shelter, and I'm, there, there's an, Ojai Greens would like to make a donation, they wanted a recommendation. So, I was thinking, if we wanted to, to not fund the 5,000, I could, we could probably, because they've already, they, they have a 5,000 contribution already from Chelsea, and I believe that Ojai Greens would also donate a substantial amount, several thousand.
I would think they would match it.
Yeah, they might.
As with the third dispensary, I would hope would match.
I could contact them tomorrow and recommend the Ojai Shelter if we decide not to fund it, because we, we spoke with them, who was with me? Was it Ryan, after the last meeting? And they wanted my recommendation, who I should fund, and I think we, we told them to wait till after the budget, so that we could get 5,000 there if the council...
I would think that we would encourage all three of them to well-end, plus the other age groups that are apparently getting the manufacturing. And on top of that, I don't see any reason for us not to stay in, doing as much as we're asking of the other people to, to help the people that are doing this for the...
We didn't ask anybody to do it, they just did it on their own.
That's true, but we've been asked, and then they stepped up in our place. This is a one-shot.
And we can talk about, the only thing I'm saying is it doesn't change that we need 100, we have $110,000 to spend. It doesn't reduce it, it wasn't in the budget. The 5,000 we're asking somebody else to do hasn't been allocated anywhere, so we're not saving anything by having them pay.
Well, it's part of the total.
That's true, I, I'm simply...
It's actually not, it's not part of the total.
No, it isn't part of the total, no.
Isn't it, isn't it, this amount doesn't add up to 296,000 for here?
It doesn't change the 110,000.
The one point I, I should have made earlier, the two items that were highlighted in green, the Chamber of Commerce equipment request and the shower utility vehicle request, those we've determined could be funded from the vehicle equipment fund, or I'm sorry, the equipment replacement fund.
133.
Yeah, and so those actually would not, those could be done without impacting that $110,000.
Right.
So, it sounds like we're in support of helping, but also encouraging those other businesses that have, as you say, voluntarily agreed to do it, and you're correct, it doesn't change the bottom line.
No, we talked to them last week, too. They were, they were, after they had heard what Chelsea and Sessby Creek had done, they, and they were at the meeting last time, they inquired, I think, to almost everybody and said, "Hey, what recommendations?" And my recommendation to them was, "Well, let's see what happens after the budget meeting."
Yeah.
And that's where we're at now. But it still doesn't change the fact that we have $110,000 allocated in the budget for outside community groups, and we have to decide how to split that up, but that doesn't increase how much money we have. That was a line item in the 110, so that's all it meant.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Well, it, it seemed to me that is, that we shouldn't be increasing the outreach at a time when we're having to do, cut back on the city funding for city services, and I would think that, so if we were to consider the Green Coalition, they're, they reduce their focus to two things. One is the Earth Day, which I think we could easily waive the rental fee for the park as our contribution, and on the, the garden, $35,000 certainly should cover what they're doing in the way of maintenance if, I know the city could do it for 35, if that's all we were buying, and use the 15,000 difference to support a mutually supported activity, which is 100% clean energy and fighting climate change.
So, Mayor, may I? So, you're, you're, and I'm not sure I agree with your approach, because I'm, I'm, I'm not sure I agree philosophically with having the, the rate increase being part of community organization, but I mean, that's just a philosophical classification.
Well, I, I don't view it as a community organization. I think we're buying $50,000 worth of something for the benefit of the environment, of which they sponsored this, and it's a really good idea. We're putting up another 8,000 on our own to cover the electrical bills, so...
Right. It, it comes down, really, to whether we want to see if we want to include the, the Chamber and some support along with the Green Coalition, and the, your approach towards the, the Clean Power Alliance. And of course, that cannot be done without going further into reserves tonight. I mean, that's just the bottom line.
So, you're saying a different way to distribute the...
Well, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just pointing out what, what you're saying, basically, is to, is to basically, I mean, that's, that's the, the question we have to do to not, we have to decide tonight whether we're going to stay with the 110 or not.
Stay with the 110.
Stay with 110,000 or not.
Look, if we, if we aren't moving the museum budget from 60,000, then that's 60,000, there's 50 left. If the Chamber said they're willing to go down to 40, if we're funding them on the minimal 60-plus percent reduction they're talking about, then we're at 90,000, excuse me, then we're at 100,000, so we have 10,000 left. So, our options are to underfund the Green Coalition by somewhere between 87,000 and 40,000.
Or go further into reserves.
Right, or go further into reserves.
And I believe the mayor did not mention the Chamber.
And I, so, if we are not going to do that, then I, we, we would need to talk to the Chamber, see if they can operate anything less than 40, which I'm against. That's still a six-month window we're looking at, according to Jamie. And on the Green Coalition, then we have to make that difficult decision. Now, I believe in the past, Green Coalition funding has jumped all over the place, right? Wasn't it at 1.25,000?
No, was it?
Yeah, sure. I was at the meeting where it was 25,000. It used to be 25,000. I'll just make it easy.
That's correct.
And, and now it's at 50, and I don't know what increased then, but I have, but we, you know, I, I'm not against the Green Coalition getting that money, but we have to make a decision.
Right, it's a matter, yeah, we have to make a decision whether we're going to stay with the 110 or go further into reserves.
Now, what, when you say the in-lie fee of the rental of the park, how much is that worth, and what was, because I didn't know that that exists.
It's not large.
About $500.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So, Mayor, just, understanding the Green Coalition, first of all, I think everyone here supports them. And they, and they do some incredible services, and as Severo clearly spoke about, there are services that we don't even know about that they do, because they don't track their volunteer hours as well as probably they should, much less the tasks that those volunteers are doing. But, having said that, I, they're putting an emphasis this year on developing that back garden, and they want to put an emphasis on that at $60,000, $59,000 and change. I'm, I'm proposing that we take that out of their budget, and that we look at creating an ad hoc committee, and we actually get with, they can be a part of it, but we actually create an ad hoc committee, and we get that design and that thought process through the community done faster than they can do it, by us putting a timeline on a table, and we do it. So, that's, that's one thing that we can do. So, now we've taken, let's say, $60,000 out of their 93, that gives them $39,000. I think we can also reduce some of the tasks that they're performing, and just identify clearly what we'd like them to do.
Add some to that.
Yeah.
I, I kind of agree. The, the one thing, you know, I, I am in favor of the demonstration garden. I think it's an important project to be leaders in the community about how we handle gardening and these other things. I think the culinary future that's coming around for Ojai, I think the demonstration garden can work with that. But what I don't like is that we don't have any partnership money in here. I don't like that the school district isn't involved. I, I said this to the Green Coalition when I met with you guys, there's nothing that's changed. This is a field trip project. This is the, this is a great site for field trips to go to. Why isn't the PTA contributing money that we're matching? Why isn't the school district talking about it? We want to use our space, but the city giving its land should be sufficient for everybody else to come in and be helping this out. Funding it and giving the land is not something we normally do. Often, just like we are with the, the humps we're talking about, the speed humps, just like we do with EV charging stations, we put out the land, somebody else builds it, or we get the land and we build it. This is not happening that way. And I want the demonstration garden to be emblematic of what we embrace as a city with our forward-thinking, environmental, green culture and ideology. But I don't think it should have to be at the detriment to the other sections in this, and it's a community thing more than it is a line item thing for the city. So, that, you know, I, I, again, I think that that's where we, we just, we're going to have to cut it somewhere, and that's...
Well, I want to, well, you know, point out that, assuming, and I agree with that, I think what we need to do, I'm going to, on the future agenda, I'm going to bring up that we do what you're talking about, an ad hoc committee to study the community garden, about how we're going to go forward with that. You take that out and leave Earth Day and the other community outreach and, and, and Green Coalition, and if we want to do something with Chamber, you're still having to dip further into reserve.
Right.
Well, maybe we can't, under the circumstances.
So, that becomes the question, are we, or are we not?
Yeah. I think, under the circumstances, perhaps it can be justified.
Well, I'm just, I'm trying to move this down the decision tree here. And I, and I, I, I don't want to speak for anyone else, but I think we're talking about on the order of, what, 30,000 or so additional dipping into reserve in order to handle, do at least an interim support, partially fiscal year support for Green Coalition and Chamber.
Yeah, depending on the Green Coalition number would be, because it'd be, there's only 10,000 left, so it's whatever.
And we'd have to, what I'm trying to say is, is...
I don't know, well, what was, what would be the specific number? Because you cut out some specific things. I don't know where you're getting...
Well, if you take out, if you, if you...
If we take out the demo garden, I heard 35...
If you take out 59,600 of Green Coalition, you're, you're left with, you take out 59,600 from 97, 350, you're left with 37,750. If you take, just for round numbers, if you round that down to 37,000, and then you add, say, 40,000, and you look at these both partial fiscal year, that's 77,000, and...
Then we're at 133.
Yeah. I, I'm just...
And that's where you're coming with your 33,000 in addition.
That's what I'm saying, is, if we want to do both, we're going to have to dip in reserve in any, in any kind of a meaningful way.
And then we're about, back to where we were at 57 with the original...
Then we're right about back at the 54,000.
Well, and here's the other thing, too, is, is, and, and I think we need to recognize this, there could be additional monies coming in. Again, I'd like to wait for that six-month period, and if there's additional funding available, then that comes back for another discussion regarding funding something that the Green Coalition might need, and also funding something that the Chamber of Commerce might need. So, I think there's a win-win there.
And we have some clarity, and we have time to study the community garden concept.
Right. As well as, like I said, getting an ad hoc committee and actually moving that, this facility behind us further along the road. Also, when we look at, look at that, we might even look at some type of revenue that we can create out of that facility, weddings or anything like that, that would, that would, that would play with that entire space.
Be part of the ad hoc committee.
Yeah. I mean, we've got to, I mean, I hate to say, but it's got to be monetized in some way that makes it worth all the effort, not to be monetarily supported, but to be financially sustainable.
No, I agree, that would be the...
And the law, we can't have a sustainability garden that's unsustainable for our economic reasons.
That's the job of a, that's the job of a study committee, all right, have a plan. But anyway, I'm just, I'm just trying to put it in stark terms. If we want to have some, any kind of a meaningful, meaningful partial year support for Green Coalition and Chamber, we're going to have to go into reserves.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I think...
I'm suggesting a modest amount.
Yeah.
I'm in agreement with that, and then saying, "Look, we're going to need these organizations too, to maybe do some additional fundraising, to come to us, how we can help, and figure out how to close this gap later, and, and in the interim, we'll have a discussion about raising our revenues a little bit, but that's not going to happen for a little while. So, it's going to have to be done." The reality is, we don't have enough money to give everybody everything we want, but we're going to darn well try as hard as we can.
All right.
Define a modest amount.
A modest amount would be to go with a, a start of 37,000 for Green Coalition and 40,000 for Chamber. And then, that's, Rudy, you got a calculator handy?
So, according to my calculation, that's 50,000. That brings our deficit back up to 50,000.
Basically puts us back to the 50,000 structural deficit.
It's 27 more than the 110, so we'd be increasing our public expenditure a little bit.
It's 27 times two plus the Clean Power Alliance amount.
And we're back at 50,000.
Right. For a structural deficit, we'd be dipping into reserves that much to at least have some partial months, subject to October review, hopefully, where we're at.
Everybody got the math down?
And then we're going to have the stress of, I mean, we are in six months or whenever, we're going to have to really figure that out. We're going to have to tell the organizations that, too, right? This is, you know, we, we aren't guaranteeing there's going to be more money come October, but we'll try our hardest.
Start planning for Earth Day and...
Well, also, the other thing that could happen is, is these two entities should actually come back to us and demonstrate what they've done with that money to this point in time. And also, we keep, we keep bringing up, looking for additional resources. What have they done in six months to create more money for themselves, so that they're more self-reliant and less reliant on us? So, that's, it's a win-win for everyone. It requires them to get additional funding, come back and tell us how and why, and it gives us the opportunity to, to redirect any additional funding that we might receive in that six-month period to things that we know we need to do.
So, I'll, I'll go ahead and make that in the form of a motion for budget approval as amended.
Is there a second?
Got a second? Second?
Okay, we've got a move in second.
And do we need to clarify that eliminates the phone system, the Clean Power Alliance, and the other things that are in the draft?
Well, it still would include the Clean Power Alliance, because we have to pay that.
Well, I know, but it's not, well, I mean, it's going to be in a different part of the budget, I assume.
Right.
But still, a part of the structural deficit, and, yeah, that, my motion does not include the equipment.
Okay.
Okay.
And it's...
Okay, any further questions?
I'm out of some strings, Brian, I'm sorry.
Ready for a vote?
It's two, two, two.
Okay.
Roll call.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Wierich?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
And I want to commend staff for a much better documented and really much more supportive budget process. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Rudy, Jame, the whole team, they, honestly, thank you guys on that. The budget stuff, we got this.
Before we move on, you and I will get together and discuss the ad hoc committee?
I'd love to.
Yeah, we're going to do future agenda items.
Okay, guys.
Don't lose the momentum.
You know, organizations like Food for Thought could be part of that.
Yeah, okay. We're still in session here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Our next topic is solar access guidelines.
Good night, Rudy.
You're a free man.
Oh, I can sleep tonight.
We did better than last year.
Yes, and thank you. It's been a much better process.
Thank you, Rudy.
Okay, Mr. City Manager.
The council got 20% better, that's why.
Good point.
So says the rookie.
Yeah, I'm sure glad we got rid of that guy, Blatts.
Yeah, that other Blatts, right.
No relation.
So, so solar access standards, we have a zoning text amendment to amend the solar access standards. The council actually already has discussed this previously when we adopted the solar access guidelines for residential properties back in September of 2018. The council gave direction to Planning Commission to review one additional change that was discussed at that time, which was the change to a 30-degree sun angle standard rather than the previous standard, which was a distance to the property line standard. The change is intended simply to make it easier for homeowners, you know, contractors, et cetera, to determine the proper building height and setback requirements from adjacent properties, and to ensure that all residents have solar access. The Planning Commission considered this at the November 7, 2018 Planning Commission meeting, and voted by a 5-0 vote, there were two absences, to recommend this, this adjustment, so it's back to council for adoption at this time.
Okay. Do we have any cards on this? No? Okay. Do we have any cards on this? No? Okay.
I move approval.
Okay. Okay, moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Thirty degrees sounds just about right.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Thirty degrees of separation?
Yeah, yeah.
Do we need a roll call for this?
As an ordinance, as it is an ordinance, unfortunately, yes.
Yes, no, no, it's fine. Not unfortunately. Will Luke Clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Johnston.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Francina.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick.
Yes.
Councilmember Heaney.
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts.
Yes.
Got a different order on this.
Motion passes. That takes us to item number five. Your item, Ryan. Now, Randy.
There we go.
Go again, the other R.
Yeah, I'm right on that.
Right. Okay. Downtown parking study request for proposal. And we got some comments on that. Well, before we take the comments, will we take the staff?
Okay.
I like this map, by the way.
Yeah, we'll pull, we can pull that up too. So we, the item before you is the downtown parking study, RFP. Essentially, I think what it boils down to is we've, we've all heard for quite a while that parking is a concern in the city and that we have a variety of parking challenges. We are trying to get the process moving to address some of those challenges. The first step that we proposed was an RFP to, to select a consultant to do a parking study for the downtown area. The report has some comments about the nineteen ninety-one and two thousand and six prior studies. The ninety-one was a substantial study that actually resulted in some changes, such as the parking in Lufy and a couple of other items. Two thousand and six was more of a minor study by comparison, so it's been, you know, essentially since ninety-one, since a real study's been done. The attached to the staff report is a draft RFP, and we're asking council to approve authorization of that RFP.
Okay. I have three cards, so I'll take comments from the public. Russell Sidney with Laura Ward on deck.
Thank you, Mayor Johnston and council, once again, for being able to speak. Guess what? This is a climate change issue. The concern that I have about the parking situation here is that it's integral to the need to be able to work with EV charging. EV charging will, can both contribute and mitigate some of the parking needs. I've been working to develop some information about how the EV charging would look if we were actually able to provide for the charging needs of the entire community and for our visitors. And we, in that process, with the help from Councilmember Blatts, we've been able to identify some key locations, and also to recognize that one of the things about parking is that the new technology in terms of first and last mile movement with things like electric bicycles and, you know, rental bike, bicycles and things like that, is also one of the elements that can be included within the parking that would also be able to help impact climate change. The key locations include Clough Park for charging, because it has a four-hundred-and-eighty-volt transformer there immediately adjacent to high voltage lines. And if we do in fact modify that area as part of the ATP, integrating EV charging into that location, is one of the things that we might want to consider, in part because it's probably the best location in town in terms of both multifamily and people in old buildings that don't have the charging they need, as well as access to the downtown area and to the shopping. The other place being by the Edison substation, there is a lot on Montgomery that extends to the substation on Willow. It's a, it's a one-half the size of the two lots that are being proposed for the new project. If we could figure out how to partner with Edison to turn that into EV charging, that would then represent additional parking adjacent to the downtown area. So there's funds coming through from the APCD, coming through from the state, that should be able to support some part of the charging site. And if we can integrate that in with the, with the parking plan, then we, we would be able to move in the direction of adding the reduction of greenhouse gases to the, the parking plans that, that we need to be able to integrate in. Sorry about that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Russell.
Thanks, Russell.
Laura, you're up, and Tara Jeffries is on deck.
Hi, I'm Laura Ward. I think Russell and I can save you guys thirty grand right now. He's halfway there. I want to talk about, I think we should take a page from Google's Business Operations playbook. They ask questions to clarify their vision, then make decisions. Their first phase is why. So please consider that what this survey is really for, because it's not clear to me. Why is making a change necessary? This is them, this is Google. Why is making a change necessary right now? Does making a change align with your vision and aspirations? What problem are you trying to solve? What are the threats and opportunities? What diverse input is needed before a decision is made? From my view, the idea of this parking study looks like a thirty-thousand-dollar can being kicked down the road. Is there a parking problem? And why do we have that problem? I can always find a spot downtown when I want to go, but maybe I'm just lucky. I'm hearing from business owners that the downtown is empty during the week, and there's plenty of parking and slow business. Is, is that the vision? I've been hearing the lack of parking being blamed on tourists, while some know that the transient occupancy tax is half of the city's budget. A tax I recommend we raise to twelve percent. When the city elected to eliminate short-term rentals and all those tourist beds, it lost COT tax, increased the number of day trippers, hurt local retail businesses causing closures, and increased traffic. I'm not sure if that was the vision. The parking congestion centers around Montgomery and Ojai Avenue on the weekend. And ever since the artistic director, Richard Camp, came in, the art center shows have been much more popular. And the locals are people that prefer community theater over tourists, so that's about a hundred-and-twenty-five people when you have the audience and the crew going. So that puts a lot of pressure in that area. So, yet the fear of outsiders and the shut, shut the door behind me mentality continues to escalate. And the outsiders are blamed for what really is poor design and lack of planning. The city recently waived the parking requirement for Topa Brewing, so if more parking is needed now, the city should provide it since it's decided it didn't need it before. The first step would be to free up the twenty-two parking spots on the north side of Ojai Avenue. Despite the fact that some property owners don't want cars parked in front of it, I don't like cars parked in front of my house, but I don't own the street. Next, they could paint over, you could paint over the red area in front of the pergola for the Phantom Bus number sixteen, and get a couple more spots there. And then you can buy that property on, on Montgomery that Russell was talking about, install solar, solar panels, and with shaded parking below, and we'd solve all those. So I just wonder if the council really wants to improve the parking. So I'm suggesting you do something rather than spend thirty thousand dollars having people look at it. There's only ten blocks. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Is Tara's here? I guess not. Okay, those are all the cards I have. Bill. Oh.
Oh, did you wanna?
I can just say something real fast. I think the chamber can help here also in the sense that I'm a believer that a lot of the parking spots are taken up by the business employees and the owners. And I've stated this before, but I think that's something that I'm trying to ramp up, and I, if I really get some support on that. I, I think, if, if, the support I need is where do I put them? I need a parking lot that they might have to walk to their stores. But I think if you go downtown before the store's open, it already looks pretty full.
Over by Elisa would be good for them to walk.
And so if we could work together and figure out a solution where they would park, I was already working with Andy at the school district, and it came down to with the city manager, issues of securing chaparrals back parking lots so that maybe the employees can maybe park there and walk. But I think some of the problem is the employees and the, and the owners are parking right in front of their stores, and we can't ask them to not do that, because then they'll park in front of someone else's store. And so we don't, we have to have a solution before we really ask them to, to shift. But I think that's something that we should also keep in mind, that the chamber might be able to help.
Okay. Thanks, Jamie.
Wait, we have a member of the public. Please, she's the Complete Streets.
It would be nice, guys, in future, if you'd fill the cards out, so we don't, but come on down, we've already, Jamie's been allowed to, certainly Kathy's.
I'll make it quick.
Yeah, right, I know.
Your time management was excellent today.
I know, and then we're gonna keep it going too, right?
Kathy Nolan, I'm here.
I'm here tonight as Planning Commissioner and Chair of the Complete Streets Committee.
And I want to confer with a couple of the other members of the public that came up. We have identified places in the city, including the north side of Ojai Avenue, including the red curb area in front of the pergola, where you could add more car parking, but you also could actually add more bike parking. So we're talking about climate change, we're talking about resilience and what have you. We need to add more bike parking. The other thing is, I have talked to some shop owners in town during the week, and, you know, say, oh, how's business? And they'll say, slow, there's no parking. And then a lot of times I said, you know, I just went by the parking lot on Lower Libby. Nobody's parking there. It's not that far. If I go to Ventura, if I go to Santa Barbara, I always walk many blocks. Of course, we need to make sure there's ADA accessible parking for those that, you know, need special access. But it is okay to walk a couple blocks. That's just my two cents.
Right. And if we put signs up that can be read.
Yes.
But the city manager is, is already consulted and is working on some of those quick fixes. The idea of putting this on the agenda, I think, was to have the discussion, and I think people need to understand that if there's going to be a real parking planning, and it costs some money, there needs to be a parking authority. There's no, the city can't afford to do it solely on its own, and I don't think any individual business. I, I happen to agree with the criticism that we waived, and I believe improperly, but nonetheless, too late when the objection was raised. I don't think you waive city parking fees using a variance process of the Planning Commission. But that, that's already over. So now we have to figure out what to do in the future. And the question is, is whether we want to have a basis for this, and to bring in the partners of the Civic Association, who have made some overtures, saying that they would be willing to help. But we have to have something that says, you know, it, it can't just be that we'll, we'll have everybody park on the street, that we're running out of street.
Well, I just, I want just to, in my mind, coalesce everything that's been said, all the testimony, yours as well. And just say that I think that the proper course forward, and I, and I want to thank the city manager for bringing it to the, to the agenda, it was overdue. But I think the proper course forward is to take this RFP, put it in the hands of a, the rightly, correctly constituted ad hoc committee, a council committee, and not just go to the outside consultant route, when we might have all of the expertise and insight that we have right here already, to bring these different threads together, look at this RFP. Perhaps, we were talking about being creative, instead of spending this money on an outside consultant, maybe have the contract with the, with the chamber to help us focus on this in a proper way. And, and see if they're, come back with a recommendation, rather than issuing an RFP, come back with a recommendation to this council about maybe an alternative to going to an outside consultant. Because these outside consultants, if you look at our history, and I'm gonna give you one example that I remember from decades ago, or maybe a couple decades, where this, this council paid a bunch of money for someone, an outside consultant, to analyze our traffic and how we could fix, change how our road circulation was to improve our traffic. I think we spent fifteen thousand dollars or something for a consultant to tell us, well, just make Ojai Avenue one way, one way, and Matilah one way, the other way, and put a bunch of tra, traffic on Villanova. That was what we spent fifteen thousand dollars for. That was our, that was our consultant contract. Now, of course, nothing came of it, because it was somebody who came from outside and felt, they had to come up with something, and it, it didn't have that local insight and that local expertise. So I think we ignore local expertise at our peril, and I think, I think the right kind of, of ad hoc council committee could look, start with what Mr. Vega has done here, work with the chamber, and come up with a specific proposal that would give us a lot more bang for our buck than an outside consultant.
Okay, I don't, I don't have a problem with what you're, you're, you're saying, Bill. The, but the observation, one of the things, Chris, you and I have been around a long time, and much of, even the newspaper even had some of this information, we are going around the pole yet again, but it's okay with me. The, even what Jamie suggested, that was said by Lynn Raines in nineteen seventy-one, we gotta get the, the employees to park somewhere else. Some of those studies actually did create those parking lots, but a whole lot's happened in between. But if we're happy to do this with an ad hoc committee, I don't, I'm not anxious to spend money.
Yeah.
But having some kind of a plan that we can get everybody together on, in the meantime, I hope that we do paint the curb and put up a sign and do the simple stuff that we can do.
The rightly constituted focus committee would make those kind of recommendations and get a lot more.
May I please be on that committee? That's my area of, of expertise that I've been studying for twenty years. I've been in numerous conferences.
Parking is your expertise.
Okay, yeah, right.
Wait, wait, it's my turn to speak, Mayor, may I be recognized?
Well, you've spoken, and we're gonna put you on the committee.
But I'm not done speaking.
Oh, okay. Committee's not meeting yet, though.
No, but I think we need to start with the reality that if you increase car parking, you're increasing driving, okay? That's the number one principle, okay? LA is recognizing this. More and more cities are getting away from on-street parking and putting in bike lanes to accommodate the future, which is bicycles, scooters, alternative transportation.
But let's not deliberate tonight on this, okay?
No, okay, but, okay, so, yeah, well.
Let's, let's get a focus on how we go about deliberating.
Okay.
Okay, but we, I mean, I already identified a long list of ways that we could solve our parking problems. So if this is not the time to bring it forward.
Okay, so you're against the idea of going.
I'm, I'm, I, I, I think a study should only happen after we have done everything we can do ourselves. And we have hardly done anything. We haven't even done the signage, okay?
Okay, so I'll, I'll record that as one intended no vote. Anything but this end of the table.
Well, I just wanted to, to bring up the, the only way that you're gonna create change is if you have the buy-in from the community.
Yes.
So if you don't have an ad hoc committee that actually listens to the experts, which are the people who operate, whether it's bicycles, cars, or feet in this community, we're not gonna go anywhere except in the circle. So again, I'm obviously opposed to having this, but I am in favor of the ad hoc. One thing I just want to be, Suzie, we don't, no one says this, because I think most of us don't know how to say it politely, so I'll try politely.
Oh, my God, without introduction.
Yeah, I know. But, but I'm just saying, there's, there's just so much talk about, like, recently, scooters. And, and when I see the confusion and the madness that we have in this community on weekends, and you want to throw a scooter into that, I, I almost, seriously, I'm talking, and I'm trying to be nice about this, I don't see your vision in it, okay? I really don't. I see a lot of people getting injured. The other thing is, as much as, even with, with Kathy Nolan and the twenty-seven people who rode bikes here tonight, as much as I agree that you have a right and a place in this community, the issues that are before us are parking. And I haven't had anyone come here saying bikes can't park easily around this community. In fact, in fact, that's an easy one to solve. But, so I'm, so I'm just trying to say here, when we look at this, let's, let's really look at the broad picture of this and not think that we're gonna change this community by, by doing something a little more radical than what I would agree with.
I think I deserve equal time to respond to that, because I hardly ever get to respond.
And then this is gonna be the end of the debate, and we'll go back to the agenda.
The main thing is that everything is connected. You know, on this ad hoc committee, we should have, you know, representative from the business community, absolutely, especially in the arcade. But you cannot look at parking without looking at the whole picture of traffic and looking at the future of traffic, which is more and more cars that aren't even gonna park. You know, like, there's, there's, scooters are coming. If you look up, you know, what's happening in other cities, the, the problems with scooters have to be, no, no, but he brought it, he brought that up.
Okay.
And bicycle parking is a huge problem in the city, and if you look through the Ojai Valley News Record.
It sounds like, Suzie, that you are in favor of an ad hoc committee, is that right? Would you like to make that as a motion? We'll get a second, then we can have discussion.
I'm in favor of an ad hoc committee.
In lieu of?
In lieu of a parking study.
Okay. Okay.
And, and, and that ad hoc committee should.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded, proceed.
Okay. The ad hoc committee, I don't know if there's a limit to how many people can be on that committee, but it should be a representative from the.
If you'll allow me, the relevant limit to avoid having it to be noticed in the same way this meeting is, is only two members of council.
Okay, two council members, someone from the chamber, Jamie could be on the committee, that would be great, and someone from the Complete Streets Committee, you know, a diverse committee.
Let me interject something, this might help move this along. I think if the two members on the ad hoc meet with the city manager, like we did on the pickleball.
Right, set it up.
And let them set up how many members they want, when they're going to meet, and what they're going to do. I think the ad hoc needs to come back and just tell us what their timeframe is.
Yes.
So, there's a date certain on this.
So, and is there, do we have nominations for the committee, or do the two that have spoken so far?
I nominate Suzie.
Okay, we, we got Suzie, and I nominate Bill.
Okay, I'll accept that.
Great, we work well together.
Are we limited to two?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We can probably have an exception later, Ryan, if you really like it.
I have been wanting to do this for so long, because it would include a campaign to, to educate event organizers to prevent this parking problem on the weekend.
This is going to be unleashing of Suzie, you know.
Yeah, this is going to be great.
So, we have, we have a, we have a motion to establish an ad hoc committee, and I assume you'll accept the amendment to, composed of council persons.
Yes, thank you, I'd be honored to be on that committee.
Fancy, and Wyrick, okay? And so, if there, if there's no objection to that, we'll, so ordered, okay? Matter is dealt with.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Let us see, we've got now, what, any reports? Randy, did you have any reports tonight?
Yeah.
Okay. Ryan?
No.
No, okay, I don't have any. Do you have any tonight?
I just want to say that I have no, I, I don't want to be misunderstood, that I want to throw scooters into the chaos we already have.
Okay, this is reports for the council, not a debate.
But, well, I can just tell you, oh, please read the link that I sent you about the connection between driving and parking. I sent it to you today.
And Bill, did you have anything?
Just, I'll be circulating some very interesting original research done by EDC VC about business migration in and out of Ventura County. It's counterintuitive, it's very interesting. I'll just circulate it to council.
Okay, Mr. City Manager, it's, it's over to you. Do you have any reports tonight for the council?
No, none at this time.
Okay, future agenda items. Randy?
Oh, yes. So, I just wanted to, I don't know if we, how we want to do this, but I'd like to set up that ad hoc committee for the garden back here. I'd like to be a member of it. I don't know if, if we need to do the same process we just did here. And I'd like to have Ryan work with me on it.
Yeah.
At this stage, while Suzie works with Bill on the.
Yeah, that sounds good. If Ryan, if Ryan was.
Is that okay to do that tonight, or do we have to take it to next meeting?
No, that can be done tonight, because it's consistent with your prior item, and it's, it's an informal action to set up a committee of the two of you to look at that issue.
And we'll do the same thing. We'll talk to the city manager, and we'll formulate a group. We'll maybe notice it, because we do want probably a little bigger group. Well, I don't know, I think, I think both of these concerns are, are huge for our community.
I'm supposed to, I think, I'm planning on having lunch with the new superintendent next week or so.
Great.
Perfect.
Andy, and I will bring it up. I'll make sure we bring it up.
Perfect.
Okay.
Good, yeah.
Okay, good.
Future agenda items?
Let's see, did you have one?
I do not.
Okay.
Okay. Is there council support for bringing the climate emergency resolution maybe forward in September after our break? Because we have, we only have one more meeting, right? Yeah, and it's pretty full. But I think that's an important, and a lot of cities are adopting.
And does this differ from the Paris Agreement?
I think it does differ, but that will give me time to research.
Okay.
I'd like to assure that the public that we're considering it, you know.
What, what I would like regarding that, Suzie, I would just like more information about it, because just making a blanket, a blanket statement, what does it mean?
Yes, I can provide you with that information.
How is it going to impact our community?
Yeah.
Because that's, that needs, again, that needs to be stated publicly, so that everyone, all 7,500 of us have a, have a right to listen in.
Yes.
I think before we bring something, we get educated on it, whether we do it ourselves or we have staff bring us back some, some more information.
Well, could I start by providing you with links of what that consists of, what other cities, so you could see what other cities are doing?
Why don't you just get us a draft of what's being adopted by other communities?
Okay, I'll send that to Luis to distribute to everyone.
Well, well, again, I just, my concern is, and I, and I, and I, and I believe in climate change, and I, and I believe in all the good in it. I just hate making blatant statements that don't mean anything, that don't have any body to it. It just says, oh, we're in an emergency, so, okay, we're in an emergency, then what? I, we need, we need some substance, and we need, if we're going to do something like that, we need to have an action plan that goes along with it.
And it may be a civil adjustment.
We don't need, you know, we don't want to debate it tonight, it's simply that the request has been to place that on a future agenda, you said after the break, and you'll do the work.
Yeah, it just means that, that we're mindful that our decisions impact the, the future of the planet.
Okay, we're not debating the issue, just putting it on the agenda. You have asked for that.
I have a request that we do not put any staff time into the downtown historic district concept until it comes to this council, and we decide as a council that we want to put some staff time into that.
Okay. Now, can we?
In other words, I, I.
Is that on the agenda? Are you putting that on an agenda?
No, I'll put it on the agenda that we look, we have the historic, the downtown historic district concept on the agenda, whether we endorse that for future staff.
Add further that we don't spend any more money on it.
Well, I'm just saying, but in order to say no.
So, we, we have two items for future agendas, if the city manager has that?
Yeah, and I'll add on the historic district, adding that there's, it's not currently funded in any current budget, so no money could be spent on it until.
Staff was spending time on it, which is money.
Ah, that is news to me, but yes, I think the manager has the direction there.
Yeah.
What is the status of the, the Creek Road, our portion, the Ojai portion of Creek Road? Is that coming back on an agenda, or do we know if we can do anything, or we, do we know? It was brought up again tonight.
So, we did the, we did a letter of support to the county on that, and that was the, the last action, other than we're looking at adding some signage, but I don't have a.
What about the right, I mean, there's some city boundary streets where we own the entire street.
Mm-hmm.
Do we, where is the right-of-way along Creek Road where it's adjacent to city limits? Is it the middle of Creek Road? Is all of Creek Road? I mean, parts of the arbolata, which, these are not state highways, we have, like Kiama, the entire street, even though it's a city boundary. What's the situation on Creek Road? I've been trying to get an understanding of that between, I believe it's Hormosa and Country Club.
Yeah, and just a little further is, we, we've had individuals from the community say that we have some authority to be able to restrict those particular trucks and what's coming out doing.
Well, after the big curve, we certainly do.
Yeah, and I haven't, I've never heard an answer whether we can. And, and whether it would make any difference, because if they're going, I don't know if they're coming up this way, but if there is some travel up this way, and restricting it might be a benefit.
Mayor, are we going to agendize this discussion? Is that what we're saying?
Well, I was trying to find out if we had or not.
I'm about ready to, thank you, Randy, for your support on that. Okay, so what you're looking for is the information from staff as to whether we have.
Right, and the agenda item would be us actually putting in a restriction on the road.
So, staff, staff will look into that and.
I don't know if it was pending or not.
No, I, I didn't have that on the list, so I will add it to the list, though.
Okay, very good.
And part of that discussion will include taking a look at your existing ordinance that was passed in 1988.
Which is just the curve up, no?
Which is just the curve to the north and has some exceptions that the council could look at narrowing.
Yes.
And Mayor, I have just, I have one more comment on the agenda, if I can, please. We, we've always, we've always done a, a discussion at the beginning of the year of our priorities. Are we going to agendize 2019s, 2018, 2019s? God, I lost my train of thought.
Do you have like a workshop or do?
Well, in the fiscal year or? Well, we did, 2018, 2019, we created a priority list.
Yeah.
What I, do we want to have the same thing heading into fiscal year 2019, 2020, and then do, do we want to see what was accomplished, what's left over, prior, reprioritize that list and add to it, or what would we like to do, and if so, we would need to agendize? That is a discussion item coming forward.
I'm thinking after the summer break at best.
Well, we've just adopted our budget, so that is one of the priorities that says, you know, says what we're going to devote our resource. Then the question is, is, you know, maybe the top three things we want the staff, the city manager to focus on?
Yes.
I think, yeah, we could, we could put an exercise like that together and adopt it, okay? And I'll work with you, James, on, you know, setting that up, and we'll say, we'll plan on doing that in September.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay.
Sounds like a lot of summer homework for seven weeks.
So, does the manager have anything more for us? Okay, if not, there.